We'll start with the invocation.
Our Father in heaven, we thank the this evening for this opportunity that we have to gather together. As a city and for the chance that we have to discuss different matters of the city, we're so thankful for this beautiful place that we have to live and for the changing of the seasons and the opportunity that we have to live in this part of the world with the freedoms that we enjoy. We pray that thou will bless us this evening as we discuss different matters of the city that we can receive thy inspiration and guidance and that we can accomplish the things that we need to. And we pray for these blessings and favors in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, thank you. Okay, oh, sorry, now is when I call the order. Call, I'll call the meeting to order now. We did it earlier, but we'll do it again, just to make sure everybody's here. Roll call, please. Member Cargill.
Present.
Kurtz.
Present.
Van Orman.
Here.
Follier, here. Spencer.
Present.
Dunn.
Happy to be here.
Saulberg. What was it again? I think it was out of town. Out of town, family matter.
I move to excuse Tom Sawler.
Thank you. Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Agenda approval, I have a couple. I'll just jump right in. This time I'd like to move item ten C of our general business to item eleven, I'm sorry, general business consent agenda item C to general business. Second. Then I have one more, just for the record. If you'll refer to item fourteen under resolutions, the resolution number should actually be one two dash one six four G as in golf.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any other amendments to our agenda? Hearing none, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect, thank you very much. Citizen comment, I've got two of them, please remember, we have three minutes to speak and state whether you're resident.
I approve the whole agenda now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda, amended agenda as we just voted on. Amendment.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry about that, thank you. Citizen comments, three minutes, please, and state if you're resident. First up, we'll have Linda Ball.
This is not on tonight's agenda, but. No, okay, yeah, this isn't on tonight's agenda, but I attended a luncheon today that the speaker was a gentleman from District Nine, Fire, Friar District Nine. Didn't get his name, but anyway, he was talking about wildfires. And I've talked about this before when I brought up the line of fire meetings back, but I was just stunned at these statistics. Okay, so the previous ten years to the ten years we're in now, fifty thousand five hundred nineteen acres burned, that was between two thousand thirteen and two thousand twenty-two, which was a one hundred or one point one one seven, wait a minute, one thousand one hundred and seventy percent increase over the previous ten years. That's, I'm getting myself mixed up because I took quick notes, but in the last ten years, we've had one thousand nine hundred ninety-six fires, that's a hundred and eighty-six percent increase over the previous ten years. I may have this kind of mixed up, but anyway, it was astounding looking at a bar chart of how much more fire danger this whole county is in. Challenges are urban sprawl, climate change, unhealthy ecosystems, insects and disease infestation, air quality and health impacts to sensitive people, and competing fire services, fire service needs for other emergency services like we hear about when these guys give their presentation, you know, medical stuff, and doing more with less money. So I just want to bring that to everybody's intention, attention, if you don't know all this, because the fires that we had this summer, the two big ones, really frightened me. So I just want to emphasize keeping all that grass and stuff along our roads cut down and, you know, being on the lookout for insects that could, you know, kill trees and make them easier to be tender, whatever we can do. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next up, we have Natalie Van Buren.
Good evening. I'm Natalie Van Buren, and I'm actually here tonight representing the Ridgeline Band Boosters. On behalf of the Band Boosters, I want to thank all of you for the support you've given the Ridgeline Regiment Marching Band. The Soak a Celebrity booth at Barefoot in the Park this summer was a great success, and we thank those who came and were willing to get wet for that. And we also appreciate your support of our annual car wash and of course, your generous support of the as the title sponsor of our semi trailer project. The board would like to update you on the status of this project. As you may remember, the city council approved a donation for the project last fall. We had hoped to have a semi trailer purchased and customized for this marching band season. We've been working with System Transport, which is a local company here in Liberty Lake, to purchase a used trailer. However, in this market, finding a used trailer has been extremely difficult. They're out looking for it all the time. We thought we had one in Minnesota a month ago, and it was gone before we could even contact them. So there's limited inventory out there, so we have not purchased a trailer at this point, but hope to be able to do so soon. Once a trailer is purchased and transported to Liberty Lake, another local company, Western Trailers, will be in charge of building it out and customizing it to the specifications that we have. Our new goal is to have the trailer ready by next, next marching band season because it's very expensive and dangerous to all of our equipment to be transporting it in rental trucks, which we'll be doing again this season. In the meantime, the funds are sitting in a high yield money market account. We want to thank the city of Liberty Lake for their support of this cause. We also wanted to let you know that the Ridge, that the regiment's travel season begins this weekend in Kennewick. Our show this year is More To Me, and it includes some fun songs, including the Rocky theme song. If you want to catch the regiment at home, they will perform their show at the halftime of the Ridgeline Homecoming Football Game on Friday, October thirteenth. And then our community appreciation night is October nineteenth, seven thirty P M. at Ridgeline, and admission to this event is free. Want to thank you for your time and service to the community and apologize that it's me giving you this report. I wanted my two daughters who are in the regiment to come, but they are at marching band tonight, putting together a surprise finish to the show. So come out and watch the regiment this season. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else in the chambers? Anybody on Zoom? No, okay, all right, great, thank you very much. We'll move right along to our presentation, Spokane County presentation on ballot measure one.
Thank you all very much. Tonight for ladies' time and present to you on measure one, we're very excited. So I'm County Commissioner Mary Cooney, Sheriff John Knowles, and we have our CEO Scott Simmons here with us as well. So we're going to do a brief presentation. We're going to start with a video, I think, if we can have the video start, and then we'll do a little discussion and then we'll take questions.
Missioners of Spokane County adopted a resolution to add measure number one to the November seventh, two thousand twenty-three general election ballot. Let's talk about how Spokane County intends to use its revenue from measure number one to address criminal justice, public safety, and behavioral health needs, resulting in part from population growth in the region. Measure number one is a law and justice proposal for Spokane County. It would add a new two tenths of one percent sales and use tax on purchases beginning April first, twenty twenty-four, and running through December thirty-first, two thousand fifty-four. For every ten dollars spent by residents, visitors, and tourists in Spokane County, an additional two cents will be collected. Sixty percent of the collected revenue will be allocated to Spokane County government, and forty percent of the collected revenue will be allocated based on population to its cities and towns. Cities and towns can use their share of measure number one funds to meet local criminal justice, public safety, and behavioral health needs. Why measure number one? Population in Spokane County has been growing rapidly in recent years. As a community grows, so does its needs for criminal justice, public safety, and behavioral health investments. Just like growing populations means a need for more schools, libraries, parks, hospitals, and other public infrastructure. That is true in Spokane County today, where our criminal justice system is facing an overcrowded correctional facility and congested courts. Mental health needs and addiction rates are increasing. Crime rates are also going up. The need for resources to address these community needs is what led to the initiation of measure number one. Let's take these issues one by one. First, let's talk about criminal justice needs in our community. Due to overcrowding and outdated correctional facilities, today nearly fourteen percent of low level offenders are being booked and immediately released from the Spokane County jail as a capacity management tool approved by the district and municipal courts. Law enforcement officers oftentimes wait in long booking queues. So how would Spokane County spend its measure number one revenues on improvements? To begin with, Spokane County can allocate measure number one revenues to improve criminal justice facilities and programs at all phases, from inmate booking and detention to release and community reentry. To reduce overcrowding and allow expanded programming, approximately three hundred million would be used for constructing new facilities. Spokane County would consolidate inmates from different facilities and a new housing facility and a new community correction center on a central campus. That campus would be known as the Law and Justice Center of Spokane County. Measure number one, though, is about more than just new criminal justice facilities. It's about inmate programs like breaking barriers and helping justice-involved individuals successfully reenter the community. Expanded programming in new classroom spaces for individuals in custody would include drug and alcohol treatment, job and communication skills, anger management, and GED classes. Using revenues provided by measure number one, Spokane County also proposes to make investments in criminal justice system improvements from courtrooms and judges to prosecutors and public defenders. Plus, measure number one can fund investments in domestic violence programs and therapeutic or problem-solving courts, like mental health court or veterans court, that allow inmates to obtain treatment and services to address needs that may have contributed to the conduct leading to their arrest in the first place. Furthermore, measure number one can fund criminal justice reform recommendations from advisory groups like the Spokane Regional Law and Justice Council, made up of subject matter experts and community representatives. That can include smart justice programs aimed at reducing the number of people in custody, such as at-home electronic monitoring, jail diversion approaches, and alternative sentencing options. Moving on to public safety, measure number one revenues can be used by Spokane County towns and cities to pay for public safety initiatives, such as hiring more law enforcement officers and providing enhanced training. Measure number one can also expand co-deployed behavioral health teams that work with first responders to help provide safe resolutions for people in crisis. These teams help ensure better outcomes for those in crisis, diverting them from being arrested and instead directing them to therapy or services. On behavioral health, measure number one can fund programs like expanding and enhancing Spokane County's Crisis Stabilization Center, a facility that provides short-term care and intervention for people who are experiencing a behavioral health crisis in lieu of incarceration. This center helps people in crisis. Still have questions? Spokane County officials are attending community meetings leading up to the November seventh, two thousand twenty-three general election on measure number one to educate the public about measure number one. For more information, please also visit our website.
So it's, it's always a challenge to follow that video. They did a pretty good job of describing what measure one is about, what the, where the revenue is generated from, how much the projections are predicted to be going forward for the next thirty years, and all of the different needs that our, that our current system, criminal justice system has, and what these funds can be used for. I think, I think it's important for the council to understand some of the challenges that we're going to face as a county, but also some things that are going to affect you as a council moving forward in the next several years. I, I speak frequently about the volume that is going through the criminal justice system in Spokane, not just reported crime rates, but one of the more compelling statistics is the number of felony crimes that the prosecutor's office here in Spokane receives every year. In two thousand twenty-two, it was about thirty-five hundred felony cases, new felony cases. To give you some idea of how that taxes our capacity, the prosecutor's office has roughly forty-six deputy prosecuting attorneys to handle those thirty-five hundred cases. So that's a very, very big caseload for an attorney. And I guarantee you, the public defender's office is taxed just as much, if not more. And, and there's significant need there. Prior to two thousand twenty-two, and actually prior to the Blake decision and the, and the COVID epidemic, they averaged about five thousand, a little over five thousand cases a year. So whether, I, I think, I'm sure you all recognize that now that possession of a controlled substance is a gross misdemeanor, the financial burden of prosecuting those folks and housing those folks in the county jail has now been passed on from the state to local jurisdictions. That'll be something that this council will have to grapple with, you know, to, to the extent that those arrests are made. It is now your burden to prosecute and to adjudicate, and not, not the counties anymore, which we shared that with the state. That is how, this is part of the reason that the funding is split the way it is. It is set by statute, by state law, that's why the county receives sixty percent and municipalities receive forty. The county, in partnership with the state, has the responsibility of prosecuting and adjudicating all felony crimes. And that's why there's the disparity in the numbers. But again, it's set by statute. One of the things that I think is great about measure one is the county is not coming to the cities and telling you how to expend your portion of the funds. You can expend them on whatever programs within that broad framework you seem, or you deem fit. And what you think is the best fit for your community and the criminal justice challenges you face. There's been some criticism that we haven't worked with, you know, local jurisdictions to come up with a uniform plan. I don't believe that that's the best way to approach it, but that's just my personal opinion. I think, you know, you as a city council, working with your leadership teams, you know what's best for your community and how to, how to expend those funds. A couple other of statistics that I think are, are compelling. We believe in treatment, and we know that, that people who, I will say, we, we believe that the safety of our public, the safety of our businesses and the safety of our schools is the first priority of government. That's our first responsibility. The outcome of people who violate the law and people are offenders, while important, is secondary to the safety of our communities. The jail or the, the corrections facility, the, the community justice facility is going to help us reintroduce accountability back into the criminal justice system that just is not there today. We are severely overcrowded in our jails. As you saw in the presentation, fourteen percent of the people that law enforcement officers are booking into the jail are walking out without seeing a judge because of our overcrowded, overcrowded conditions. Geiger facility is falling down, almost literally, and is requiring significant investment that we will have to invest whether measure one is, is passed or not, and it's a building we don't own. And that's, and that's something that every jurisdiction in this community uses. And so this measure will build a much-needed facility that will allow us to keep our streets clean, keep them safe, hold people accountable, and divert them into treatment programs that we currently cannot administer because we don't have the proper facilities. Programs that we know are successful. We have one of the most successful drug courts in the state of Washington. But the reality of it is, is that only forty percent of the people successfully complete drug court. We need to spend every dollar that we're spending and probably more, because every single one of those folks who goes into recovery is worth the investment. They really are. We need to have more funding to expand that court. And the reality of it is, is there is no programming in this country that any of us are aware of that is a one hundred percent fail-safe way to safely release people back into the community where they won't reoffend. We have to be honest about that. We need expanded correctional facilities. We need more beds. When we talk about holding people accountable, people participate and take advantage of treatment if they know there's a consequence that is less attractive than the treatment. That's an open jail bed. I would love for us to be able to implement programming that leaves this new facility with a hundred empty beds, because we're so successful at people re-entering the community safely and maintaining our community safety. But the reality of it is, is we're going to need an expanded jail, and we need to have more beds than we do. And this plan is very well thought out, very thoroughly researched, and, and takes a very conservative approach to what our needs will be going for the next thirty years. Yeah, well, and this is something you can, you can certainly talk to Chief Simmons about and the members of your, of your police department, because this is something they deal with, just like the men and women of the sheriff's office. The booking area right now, we very frequently end up in red light status, which means the booking area can only handle booking so many people at a time. And we are frequently, many times a week and for many, many hours, are so full that our law enforcement officers are stuck out in the parking lot with the people they have taken into custody, waiting to be allowed into the booking area, sometimes for three or four hours. So your, your police officers who you are paying to be on duty and keep your community safe are sitting in a parking lot down at the jail, waiting to be able to book people. This new facility will have an updated and modern booking facility that will eliminate all of that. It just allows you to spend your tax dollars a lot more efficiently, get your officers back out on the street and doing the things that you want them to do, instead of sitting and waiting in line. To, to give you an example, a couple weeks ago, Representative Schmidt went on a ride-along in the valley, and they, the jail was on red light status from when she got in the car at seven o'clock at night. It was through most of the evening, and when they went down to book somebody, I believe at about eight or nine o'clock, it was a three-hour wait in the parking lot, and there were ten other cars there waiting. So ten police officers not out on the streets of our county, keeping us safe, but waiting to book people. So that gives you an illustration, and, and that's not anecdotal, and it's not something that is rare. It is, it is persistent, and, and I I challenge you, just, you know, talk to Chief Simmons, you know, talk to your officers, they'll, they'll tell you it's not uncommon, so.
Yeah, no, so I want to make sure that people understand that, that this is, you know, what we have downtown right now is a maximum security jail. And so we want to have that medium security and that low security jail. And so that Community Correction Center is that low security where we can provide those wraparound services that people need. We can bring people in to do classes with them. Right now, our downtown facility is not capable of doing that. And so, so it's really important for us to really look at this holistically, because we don't want to have the recidivism. We're not making money off the jail. So make no, no mistake there, Scott, that this is something that is costing our taxpayers, and so we need to look at it and be more effective and more efficient with it. And so that's what we're looking at. Some of the things that I talk about is, you know, we're doing upstream measures, so we've invested in Launch Northwest. So we can help kids have that hope and opportunity, so they know they can go to some kind of post-secondary education, whether it's the trades, whether it's, you know, community college, whether it's four-year college. You know, we want to make sure that kids at whatever, whatever economic level have that hope and opportunity so that they don't get into our criminal justice system. We also are doing a schools program that we're expanding around the county to several small school districts that provides a survey where it's a wellness check. And so we have the opportunity to then provide counseling services to those students. And we're testing everyone in, I think it's tenth grade, that we did at West Valley School District. And as we expand to Riverside, Cheney, and East Valley at this point in time, we'll be doing that with everybody. It's, doesn't matter your economic background, we're testing every student. And we're seeing about forty percent of those students are showing signs of anxiety, depression, and suicidal tendencies. And so we're there to help change that direction for those students, because again, that's a pivotal age and a pivotal time to make sure that they don't end up, you know, with law enforcement and in our criminal justice system. And so we're, we're already spending those funds on the upstream side. We need these funds to help us now on, on where we're at and to expand the services that we're doing. And like John said, in the booking area, the programs that we know that we need to do to prevent recidivism that's happening right now. And, you know, some of the criticism is that, you know, we don't need more beds. Our population has increased since the early eighties. This jail was built in the early eighties. As you saw in the video, it's significant population increase, and over the next thirty years, I expect that our population's going to continue to increase because people like it here in Spokane County. So, so to think that we're, you know, magically going to have people not commit crimes is not realistic. But we also want to make sure that, you know, we're not expanding to a point, because we do want to have those services and those programs that will help prevent people from committing further crimes. The other thing I would say is that this is something that is happening around the state. The state came through in the early eighties and helped fund part of the jails that were built at that time. And so I've, I'm president of our County Commissioners Association right now, and I know that Sooton County is, is building a new jail. Clark County is looking at, just hired an architect for their new facility. Stevens County has this on the ballot. Watcom County has it on the ballot. We do. So it is something that is happening around the state. It is not just Spokane County that this is happening for. We've seen that, you know, as, as a facility that's over forty years old, you know, you see the inefficiencies that you thought were, you know, effective means of oversight at that point in time, but over forty years, things have changed. Just like they have for law enforcement, just like they have for different departments within the city of Liberty Lake. And so we need a new facility that's going to do the things that we know that will help people to not be back in our criminal justice system. So those are the, some of the things I wanted to make sure we pointed out. It is two tenths of one percent sales tax, and that's how it's being funded. And so it's not just our citizens here in Spokane County that will be paying that, but it's also then anyone that's traveling in. So as a border county, we know we have several people come from Idaho over to Washington to Spokane County and purchase items, as well as, you know, the reverse happens. But we want to make sure that as, as, this is a tax that is on, on everybody, so. We can take questions. I know we, we had another presentation, but I think the, the video shows most of it, so I think we'll be good.
Okay, questions, yes.
Commissioner Cooney, are we talking about one facility? Are we talking about satellite facilities, like maybe one out here Spokane Valley area?
No, so what we're looking is, is in the video, next to our current jail, which is that maximum security jail, is putting another building next to that.
Which is downtown Spokane.
Which is downtown Spokane. Part of it is, is our court system is downtown. Our court system is required to be at the county seat. And so for transport purposes and all of that, because all of those people that are in our criminal justice system have to get to court. And so, yes, and we own the property there.
So would Geiger go away?
So Geiger will go away, because we don't actually own Geiger. Geiger is actually owned by the airport.
Right.
And we lease it, and we know, we have been told that at some point that lease is going to expire. It's on a five-year lease. I think we're two years into it right now. But with the, the overlay study for the airport that happened about ten years ago, we know that there's the property around that area. We couldn't put a facility like this there because of the concentration of people. So Geiger was grandfathered in when the J-List study was done, but we will not be able to use that site or a lot of the property there around. So, you know, because there's, there's property all the way to where the New North Forty is. Can't have residential there. They can have a retail operation because people are coming and going, but you can't have residential. And so that's why we, we truly feel, and since I've been commissioner, it has always been, I, the end of two thousand seventeen, the discussion has always been downtown. I think with the West Plains was back in early two thousand and five, when they first started discussions about having that, and John may be able to speak to that as well, but, but we really, I truly believe that if we have the wraparound services that we need to have at a community correction center and be able to help keep people, you know, to where they need to be and not just putting them out on the streets, that we're going to be successful.
So it sounds like the same conversations that we've been having for twenty years.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yeah, and, and correct, and, and if, for, for whatever reason, measure one is, is not passed by the voters, we'll We'll still be having this conversation next year and the year after that and the year after that. Um, one thing to point out, when when we were in discussion and planning for a possible facility out on the West Plains. It was estimated that it would cost us an extra two million dollars in transport costs and employee fees and, you know, FTEs. To maintain the the shuttling of of inmates back and forth to the court, so. Um, and then other zoning issues and everything like that. Every time we've done a study on where the best site for the jail is. Uh, the downtown public safety campus has always come out as the most attractive location for it.
Yes. Uh, thank you both of you for being here. Uh, two questions for you. One, is there a sunset provision on this? And then two, are you asking the local governments to formally endorse this? Are you just? Here to give information or maybe a collection of both?
Yeah, we we are here to educate. Um, I think you will see next week, uh, at five thirty on the tenth. Uh, the county commissioners are going to be having a special hearing that we will be, um, able to actually. Provide our, our thoughts on our pro and con. Um, and have that meeting so we can actually officially endorse. Um, but we are here tonight in our official capacity to educate. Um, so if you, you know, so, so that's what we're here to do and apologize.
The the sunset.
Yes, thirty years, so, so that's why when people say this is like the largest, you know, tax increases, it's really, it's for thirty years. Um, it doesn't start, if it passes in November, it doesn't start until. April, so June would be when cities and the county would start to see money. The county is into, uh, you know, will bond on ours to build our facility. Um, so that's, that's what the county will be doing to use those funds to to build the facility.
Thank you.
Yeah, and and it's just as a matter of of illustration, when they talk about the. Potential of one point seven billion dollars being generated, again, it is over thirty years. Um, and there has been, there is such a need in our criminal justice system here at the felony level. Um, yeah, because that's a big number. And when you take out that the overall cost, the overall burden for building new facilities about. A little north of five hundred million dollars, that leaves almost sixteen million dollars a year. Uh, just for the county's portion to spend on all of these initiatives. When you talk about how backed up our court system is, the way our court systems, the superior court system is. Set set up right now, we can handle about three hundred and fifty cases a year of those thirty-five hundred that we receive. So we we need significant investment there. Um, I will also say that the courtrooms that we have to invest in, they are not inexpensive. And, uh, just in law enforcement needs alone. Uh, for the the jurisdictions that I serve, the contracts that I service, plus the unincorporated part of the county. Uh, for us to get to what the state average officer per thousand is, we'd have to add a hundred and thirty-six. Police officers to our roles. Well, in today's dollars. That would eat up and surpass the entire sixteen million dollar surplus that's left over from the county's portion. So it it sounds sixteen million dollars, sounds like a lot, but. Administering criminal justice these days, given how expensive it's gotten and how much we have underinvested. In the last thirty years. Um, it there, the need, the need far out surpasses the ability for this measure to fund it all, so.
Yeah, great. Thanks, Commissioner Cooney and Sheriff Knowles. I'm grateful that you're here tonight. Uh, personally, I've seen the video. I'm a strong advocate for measure one. This gives us a chance as a community to discuss it more and for us to get out the word, I'm going to say educate. Uh, on how how this measure, uh, positively affects our community. Uh, I personally had the privilege of serving on a jury, uh, about two months ago now. And had a chance to walk about the campus and have firsthand, um, understanding of the people and the facilities. Um, not that you see that much of it from the outside like that, but it's a personal witness gesture that. We're ready to reinvest, in my opinion, in criminal justice and law and justice for our community. So thanks for being here.
Now, well, I I will add one thing and it 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 kind of goes to answer your question is. It is completely in your purview, whether you make a public endorsement or not. We're just here to educate, not ask for it.
Couple more questions if you have time.
Yeah.
Good.
Uh, thank you both for being here. Um, I I think the information you guys have provided is quite sobering for our county. You mentioned, uh, that 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 six extra sixteen million would would be eaten up if you put it all into law enforcement. Uh, are you going to be putting some of that into additional officers or what? What's the plan for that?
Uh, you know, it would be my intent to request some of that funding for officers, but as in all things, there there's balance. Um, I have long stated that. We have challenges at the state level that are that are the policies that are being passed at the state level. Are challenging our ability to keep our community safe. I think, uh, if there's some significant changes there, that can make a huge impact, a positive impact on the safety of our communities. Um, you know, the the jail is certainly an issue. Uh, my, and and what I'm getting to here is. I can ask for a hundred officers and even if I could hire them, which would be a challenge in today's job market. We are only going to make a temporary dent in crime because as we pointed out. More officers means more arrests, which means more people getting booked into a jail that can't house them there and they can't. They can't really be ingested by the the court system right now very effectively. So they're just going to be back out on the street. So whatever, whatever gains we would make would be temporary. Uh, and that's, that's why I support, you know, moderate investment in more policing. Um, you know, I want to make some investments in community policing for for my agency. Um, but full while recognizing we need investments in other places in the criminal justice system that I think will be a far more impactful in our crime.
Thank you.
And I would just.
Go ahead.
I would just state that, um, you know, as as you know, we're adding a thirteenth judge in January. Um, and so then we've got to come up with a thirteenth courtroom and a court reporter and a clerk, you know, so it's it's as we look at those things. I mean, it's, it's a whole system that we have to look at as county commissioners and so. We just got a presentation from our pre-trial services, which is doing phenomenal work to help our. Uh, superior court judges and our district court judges and municipal judges. And so, so those are the things that we know that. There there is a need across the entire criminal justice system. And we really want to make sure that we're putting in those programs, uh, which a lot of those programs, there's community nonprofits that are already doing it. We just don't have the space for them to come into our jail. And so then we can now start to partner with them. So it doesn't all have to cost money, but. There there's a lot within the system that will, um, so, so, yeah, so we're we're looking at as a holistic approach.
Okay, if I can, um, I appreciate all your efforts for since two thousand seventeen, it sounds like quite a while. Um, you got my attention when you said it's going to be a sixty forty split. Uh, and you said that fourteen percent of the, uh. Folks that come and go are low offenders and they walk in, uh, in the door, get booked and walk back out. So can you give me, I'm focusing on the forty percent. And you know, you're focusing on the sixty and I appreciate that relationship. Uh, I'm wondering if you can give me a little idea of what in the back of your mind would be expected at the city level, not just ours, but all of them. Uh, for the forty percent, are you suggesting that we address the low level offenders as you said earlier? Uh, what part of a relationship do you, do you think is going to work? How's that going to interact here?
So, so upon passage, we have time to to talk through some of those issues, but I mean, we really need to be working with each community. And you need to be thinking of what your community needs are. So the forty percent is split based on population to each of the jurisdictions, so. I'm not.
They're not based on sales tax revenue. It's a percentage of the of the total pie.
Forty percent of the total pie.
Okay.
Will go to to municipalities. Of that forty percent, it will be based on population to the municipalities. So, um, so I'm not exactly sure how much, uh, what your percentage is versus the other cities in Spokane County, but.
I don't either, but I have a Kyle to refer to.
About one, one point three, I think.
So we did some projections for twenty twenty-four and so now that we know that. This is potentially, if this passes, it begin, the collection begins in April, we're going to see our first disbursements in June. Full year projections, we were anticipating just south of four hundred thousand dollars, so we can anticipate about half of that for twenty twenty-four. Uh, and then as sales tax, sales news tax, uh, increases as we have seen in Liberty Lake. We can probably anticipate a little bit more year over year.
So, but we think it's, it's important for you to be seeing what your needs here in Liberty Lake are different than what I think the city of Spokane's needs are. So, so that's why it really has to be at that local level that you guys are addressing what your needs are. You know what your crime rates are, who's who's coming in and out of the system and and what are some of those opportunities to spend those dollars to? Again, help so people aren't.
I assume somewhere in the fine print, it states that each municipality will use those funds. For that specific purpose, nothing else.
Uh, the the RCW that lets us do this, it, you're required to spend it on criminal justice, public safety or mental health.
Just want to get it out there.
Yeah, nope. And then you had a.
So no real.
The the fourteen percent, I'm going to let John speak to the fourteen percent.
So the the fourteen percent, when they talk about low-level criminals, generally, there are, uh. Gross misdemeanor, domestic violence, uh, DUIs, things like that. And there's a a list of charges that. Judges have allowed the correction staff to just release, um, upon booking. They go through a quick booking process. Um, it's not inexpensive, but based on on bed space. Um, they they are releasing people without seeing a judge. They get a court date, they're released. Now, these are people that we felt had committed a crime that warranted booking and it wasn't necessarily safe to. Put them back out on the street, but because we have no, no jail space, they're back out on the street. Um, I will say that generally low-level crimes, gross to miss gross misdemeanors and misdemeanors. It is each municipality's, uh. Obligation to pay for, if they're booked and they're housed in the jail. We bill that municipality for it. Felonies are all the the county's responsibility. But every gross misdemeanor misdemeanor that your police department books, um, you will get a bill for that.
So we've seen those bills.
Yeah, I know. I know, um, and and so that's, that's where I anticipate. Given that get that, you know, what used to be a felony. Uh, possession of controlled substance and I'm and I'm certain Liberty Lake has not, uh, been. Or that has been affected by the the fentanyl crisis and the and the opioid crisis, just like every other city in the state. Um, and the burden of of prosecuting that and and, uh, housing the people for that is now on the city. And again, countywide, that was about fifteen hundred cases a year. And and so that's, these dollars could be used to offset that. You know, you could use it to contract for prosecutorial services, public defense services. Uh, if you all wanted to develop your own therapeutic court, veterans court, you could use the money to do that.
Uh, one last question, if I can, um. Let's say this passes in November and, uh, what kind of a timeframe are you looking at to be? Uh, providing the service that you intend?
So we expect that it'll take about five years to actually, upon passage, to actually get the jail. And the facility built, uh, because we'd renovate the old jail. We'd, uh, add the two other buildings and so it'd take about five years total is what we anticipate. Um, just as you know, it's construction, you don't get to construct just overnight.
Yeah, I get it.
Um, so, and we are at five percent design. Um, so then we'll go through the architectural process and all of that to to get us where we need to be for for construction drawings. And then start the process. So five years is the the latest we wanted to happen. We hope it'll be sooner than that.
And one more, if I can. Since it's been in this, a discussion since two thousand seventeen, who's all been at the table discussing this project?
Well, it's actually been a discussion since two thousand and five. I was just talking to a correction corrections officer and she told me she pulled out her notes. That were dated back in two thousand and five. So it has been a discussion that's been going on since then. When I became commissioner in two thousand seventeen, I'm. Sheriff Ozzy was was sheriff at the time and he's like, we just can't keep kicking this can down the road. And and we had gone through in two thousand nineteen some studies to to look at, you know, the, uh, bed capacity that we thought we would need. And and then two thousand twenty COVID hit, so, so it kind of got delayed. And so that's why I think it's 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 here now. Um, you know, I'm committed that if it doesn't pass, it'll be back because, I mean, we, we need to do it. I know Watcom County is is had it on their ballot. Um, two times Stevens County, they're committed. We we just can't keep doing it the same that we're doing it. I mean, this is, uh, you know, kind of that insanity thing. Um, and we we've got to do better and so, but but we've got to have the funding to do it.
Thank you. So, oh, I'm more than willing to kind of. Just to say some hard things, the reality of it is, is in the earlier iterations of this, fifteen years ago, twelve years ago. We tried to bring a lot of different people to the table. Spokane City Council members, um, members from the community, members from the treatment community. And really, that's what derailed the whole process because we had people who were putting politics over the needs of the community. And and you did have people who said, well, I can't support this if we add a single jail, but. Not, not any statistical reasoning, just some belief that we could magically produce some treatment programs that would. Safely re-enter people into our community and that they wouldn't reoffend and it's just not real. That doesn't exist in any community. And and so. The you had politicians who. Bought into that and decided we're not going to support anything. And essentially, they derailed the whole process. Um, and and I applaud the county commissioners finally saying, you know what, this this jail is our responsibility. The community correction center is our responsibility. We have to get this done and we're not going to let politics derail it because the community demands that the community needs it. And all you have to do is look around all of our communities and see the effects. Of not having an effective criminal justice system of which a community correction center is an important necessary part. And and so I I just think. It's great that they said, you know what, no, we're not, we're not going to be derailed. We think this is the right thing. We're going to move forward. And it's not that they haven't been getting pushback to have. Because there are people who don't prioritize public safety over offender outcomes. It's just the reality of it.
And I would say that we're, you know, John and I are talking to people all across the nation. Um, to to see what what they're doing, what what can we glean from that to make our system better. Um, we were talking to, you know, uh, Sheriff's Department down in Arizona. I'm on the National County Commissioners Board and I'm talking to people at Naco. I was just talking to the sheriff from Houston area. Um, so, so we're having those discussions to make sure that what we're going to do here is going to be the right thing. Um, and and to the best of our ability, we're. We're not staying in any silo. We are reaching out to make sure we've got that wide net to get the best of the best from everybody.
Any other questions? Yes.
Um, I was, uh, looking at the calendar here. What date are ballots out?
I, it'll be.
Week on Friday.
I want to say like the eighteenth. Does that sound right? It's about two and a half weeks before.
Yeah. Um, the reason why I'm, uh, asking that question is because I'd like to make a motion to express the city's support for measure one. Um. Tonight, as opposed to bringing it back, because I think if we brought it back, that's going to be after ballots drop.
I would agree and I would second that.
Just something we could take up during. Council comments or right now?
I think it's relevant to the discussion.
Yeah, I mean, you made a motion to. Is there a second? So, yeah, Wendy's got it. Wendy second it, okay?
I guess there's a clarification to have a resolution brought forward from the next meeting. I think is the interpretation. Yeah, so, well, I mean, I I I guess it just, that's why I was asking the question about when the ballots drop. Because if the ballots drop that Friday before, to the extent that people only listen to us in terms of what they're voting for. Uh, it might be too late, but I mean, we could do it at that meeting too. The next meeting is on the seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Yeah.
Well, we can make the motion out, follow it up with the resolution.
Exactly. Get the staff to prepare a resolution for the next meeting. Yeah.
Any other discussion?
I think the only discussion is, could it be done? I guess can be done sooner than that. And we've done like letters of support and stuff too. I didn't know if that was a quicker way to get something forward. Versus a resolution, just to counsel for Cargill's point.
And Mark has his hand up.
Oh, sorry. Mark, you want to chime in?
Am I unmuted? Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, uh, just to clarify, ballots are released on October the twentieth.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, okay, then we can, yeah, just, uh, let me withdraw the motion. And make a new motion to bring it back as a resolution at the next, at the October seventeenth meeting.
Second.
Wendy, are you okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Any discussion? You're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Thank you. We normally only allow ten minutes for presentations, but it's a worthy discussion of everybody's time.
But thank you for allowing us to to speak to honor because it's a really fun discussion.
Just giving you a hard time. Thanks for coming.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks. All right, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, reports and inquiries, city council. Or, uh, council member Cargill.
Oh, thank you. I was just going to mention that, um, I, and I think council member Dunn as well, attended the hub breakfast. Last week, uh, which was just terrific, a a lot of energy in that room. Place was packed and I don't know how much money they raised, but, um, I'm hoping it was those quite a bit. So congratulations to. Place was packed and I don't know how much money they raised, but um, I'm hoping it was, was quite a bit. So congratulations to Phil and his team.
You bet. I just compliment that and say Phil had a great chance to overview the programs that he's provided to the community and the ones that he's planning. And so for everybody to have a great visibility to the amazing contributions that place makes in our community, it was a great thing.
Anything further? Hearing none? Yeah, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Made a presentation yesterday at the Parks and Arts Commission, which will come before the council during uh Jen's. Yeah, Jen's report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Move right along then. City Administrator's report.
There we go. The host had unmuted. All right. Thank you. Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, uh, Council. So I appreciate you all allowing me to come from you tonight from an alternate location. I'm in Austin, Texas. We're at nine fifty-four PM. It's a balmy ninety-one degrees. Um, and so uh, the report that I've got for you tonight is going to be shorter than normal, which is a good thing, I think. Uh, I just wanted to go over a few events and reminders. Uh, the burn restriction uh, that has been in place since uh June is going to be lifted uh by order of the Fire Marshal on October the sixth. And so that's something that will change. Um, so going forward, there will be no uh burn restrictions in place. Um, after October the sixth. Uh, another reminder regarding the upcoming second class of the City Academy, which is going to start on October nineteenth. Um, and we've confirmed that those uh sessions are going to take place at the Trailhead Facility. So for all of you that uh are looking to maybe join the City Academy, enrollment is open. We're going to have it at Trailhead, so that's going to be a great opportunity to come out and learn how the city delivers services, allocates resources and makes decisions. And so if you're interested in learning more about that, uh, make sure to come to the city's website at libertylakewa.gov and enroll. Uh, any questions about those two reminders? Okay, uh, moving on, we've got a quick update for you on uh abandoned property in general and, and specifically about a abandoned property that is on the west side of town. Um, this has come up. Uh, one of our council members has gotten some questions about this, and this is something that's come before council before, uh, back in June of two thousand twenty-two. We briefed you on uh, a piece of property on Aladdin Road, and we're not going to give you too much detail here, but uh, the the, the gist of the matter is that the owner is deceased. Uh, there are multiple liens on this property. And the city has attempted to acquire the property and that those attempts have not been successful to date. And so what's going to happen uh now is we're at uh October third. On December the fourth, uh Spokane County is going to have a, a, an auction and this property will be up for auction. And so we presume that on December the fourth, that uh new ownership will be established. And once that occurs, once new ownership is established, uh, the city can proceed down a couple of different routes. One, we, we can enforce our codes because we have an owner uh against whom to enforce. And I think probably more importantly is we can negotiate a path to remediate the problems at the property. And so w- we would uh recommend that we come back to you sometime after December fourth with another update. Once we have a new ownership established, uh, so that we can give you an actual path forward that we um, have talked about uh, once we know who that owner is and have reached out and, and started a preliminary conversation. So um, I know Lisa's on the line. Uh, Sean has been involved in this conversation. If there's any uh, context or information that either of them would like to provide, I'd invite them to, to add that at this point.
I can say something. Go ahead, please.
So I, I, a- as Mark alluded to, the county has a for uh tax foreclosure. That's what it is on December four. So they've set it for auction, given the taxes haven't been paid. Um, there's been challenges for the city to be able to um move forward without um consent of um, the decedent's uh family. Um, they don't have any obligation up, uh, to it, but there was some hope that they would a- assist with the process for the city to uh, become involved. Um, but they've just gone quiet, I guess is the best way to put it, when we thought we had uh an ability to move forward. Um, so there wasn't a mechanism to enforce it against um any of the family members. And so, you know, secondarily, it became an issue with regard to the ownership. And so with the county moving forward with the foreclosure aspect, um, I think collectively is the, the best way to move forward with the idea that either the county or a private party will become an owner and we can work through the process with regard to enforcement of um what needs to be done at the property.
Sean, were there federal liens on that property?
Lisa may know exactly, but I know there's a DSHS loan or lien. Um, there's obviously a tax lien from the county and there may be some Medicare, Medicaid liens um relative to the decedent.
I'm just saying the county's unencumbered in a tax foreclosure, right? There's no questions. This is going to happen.
Correct. Right. As long as, you know, as long as there's not resolution beforehand, the answer to that would be yes. But, you know, we've ta- Lisa's talked with um, DSHS previously and the county. And so hopefully, you know, once the sale were to occur, you know, there'd be a mechanism for moving forward that we just have not been able to move forward, given the circumstances. So any other questions on this one at this point that we can help answer tonight?
I don't see any work.
Okay. Uh, so moving on, uh, got an update, uh, and specifically a discussion regarding the strategic plan core values. This uh, kind of came up at, at our uh September nineteenth meeting. I mean, as you all remember, we had the discussion on August twenty-second during the workshop regarding the values. And at that time, there was a uh, suggestion made to add uh patriotism to the city's core values. And at that time, there was a strong consensus against adding it during the twenty-second workshop. At uh the nineteenth City Council meeting, there was an inquiry uh, that Councilmember Solberg made about adding it uh, to the list of core values. And, and so based on that, the, the question was asked uh, whether that had any support. And so because uh for uh, Councilmember said, yes, we, we would like to add that. And three said, no, we would not. I wanted to make sure that we had a public discussion about whether or not we are going to add patriotism to the list of core values. And just a, a couple of things before we launch the discussion. We didn't take a formal vote on August twenty-second during the workshop, right? But there was uh, Councilmember Cargill was not there. Um, and so I'm, I'm just kind of counting that that was, that was five one against, right? I mean, that, that's, that's how the discussion unfolded. Um, when you look back at the community survey data that was associated with the strategic planning survey. Y'all remember that discussion? We had about six hundred responses. Um, and of those six hundred respondents, about two hundred of them provided the free text to contribute suggestions for either adding or changing things on the core, on the list of core values. And of those responses, we had about two hundred and seventy individual things that people suggested. And of those two hundred and seventy things, three of them were patriotism. And so that's about one percent. And so just for, for some context, um, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of those numbers. And now we can decide if that is going to be something that uh, council wants to add to the list of core values or not. So I would um, stop there and, and open the floor for discussion and see if there is um, anyone who has a, 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 a strong position on this that we need to start out with.
Hey, Mark, this is Dan, not to put you on the spot. Could you, could you show us the list of the other core values? What else made it to the list?
So, um, am uh Jacob, I, am I able to share my screen?
I can read it here if you'd like, or do you want to see it?
Be great to have it on screen.
If I could point out that I also was not at that meeting when you guys went over the core values. So just throwing it out there.
No. So I'll give you the next best, then I'll just.
So I can read them. I'm, it looks like I'm not able to share my screen. But just kind of starting from the top, we had of those, like, like I mentioned, there were two hundred and seventy individual things that were suggested. Number one was inclusivity with twenty-one. Um, count, safety twenty, transparency seventeen, responsible growth thirteen, education eleven, community nine, honesty nine, accountability nine. And then everything else, which includes about seventy-three things, had nine or fewer. Um, but once you get down to the bottom, about sixty, sixty-seven of those things had four or fewer. And like I mentioned, patriotism came in at, at three. So it was well down the list. Um, and, and total uh represented about one percent of those responses.
But Dan, weren't you asking for what the some core value summary items were?
Uh, y- yeah, we're going to incorporate those into a strategic plan. Um, you did a great job, Mark, recap, recapping what the survey results were, but I thought we collected a, a smaller subset for our use in, in, in the plan.
We did.
So are you asking about what the list of core values that we had uh, reached consensus on is?
Yeah, yeah, to be specific.
Okay. Sorry, I misunderstood your question. So those are, those, those things are quality of life, integrity, partnership, community-centered activities, community investment, civic pride, financial and environmental stewardship and healthy local businesses.
Yeah, yes.
Um, when Councilmember Solberg asked, I think the last meeting about um, adding that, um, I think somebody asked Jed if that, if, if what he had wanted with that was included in civic pride. And I thought you were okay with that. And so I just wanted to see if that's.
Yeah, I, I know when we had the discussion originally, um, I think several, several people had mentioned, well, you know, I think we could you know, put that under civic pride. Um, again, I, I've kind of feel like we definitely celebrate patriotism here in Liberty Lake, probably more so than many communities around us, just with all the different things that I have already mentioned. Um, so I, I would definitely be in favor of adding that if that's, if that's what uh, we're going to vote on.
And, and I'll remind the council that there was a, there was a fairly, you know, in, in in, in terms of the amount that you could have a lengthy discussion with all of the content that we discussed on August the twenty-second, there, there was, there was a conversation about where that fit. And, and the consensus was definitely that it would, that it best fit under the current uh value of civic pride.
That's what I recall as well. I have no issues with calling it out individually, though, that's for sure.
I had just thought about the uh, sorry, you know, Pro Town.
Go ahead. Yes, please.
I, I had just thought about the fact that we've got the wounded warriors circus at, you know, the Vietnam War that wall that came in. Memorial Breakfast that's happening every year. Purple Heart City that we were just named and veteran recognition. So I guess that's what I would kind of put underneath patriotism, but that description or definition can mean a lot to many people. So I suppose I kind of wanted to hear what everybody's thought was, what that definition was to you.
I'll take a swing at that, Wendy. For me, I, I reflect on, I have patriotism for the nation, country that I'm a part of. But I have civic pride for the municipal government, the town that I'm a part of. So uh, to me, civic pride, extension of patriotism, of course, included. But it's more, it seems more immediate to our intentions and what our role is as city government.
Yes, Councilmember Cargill.
So just a couple of quick comments here. One, I mean, we could spend all night going through the two hundred and fifty different um, ideas that were put forward in the strategic plan. And I'm sure that uh, we'd like some of them and not like some of them. You know, I don't, I don't really have a problem with putting patriotism in. I don't think it hurts anything to put it in. I mean, you drive down our main street of our city and there are thirty flags that the city put up. Why did we put them up? Well, not only to honor past um, uh, past as uh military members, but also because there is a lot of of pride in the community uh for um, for the country that, that we're in. So you know, I don't, I don't necessarily think we need to spend a whole heck of a lot of time on this, but I would not be opposed to putting it in. I don't think it hurts uh, anything. I don't think it offends anyone to put something like that in. Um, and in some cases, I think the probably Liberty Lake is one of the most patriotic communities in Spokane County. Um, especially when you drive around some of the other cities in our area. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
I think one of the concerns that I have is we went through um some of the community input that they put forward that they wanted in the core values. And what I remember from that meeting is that we didn't actually put a lot of their specific words that they put forward into the plan. So it feels a little um I don't feel like we're in, in some ways, listening to the community about what they want to put in here in the first place. Um, but to put something in there that is really far down on the list, um, I don't know that we're listening to the community input. I feel us continuing to ask the community what they want in things. Um, but I don't hear us listening, taking action on that. Um, and as we're looking at doing this in a strategic plan, I would like to honor what the community has put forward. Um, I'm not opposed to patriotism. I'm a daughter of a veteran. He served in Afghanistan. Long line of veterans, um, understand patriotism. Um, but I also um say the quiet part out loud, patriotism right now can be kind of a divisive word. Um, and there are a lot of um there's a lot of different definitions of patriotism out there. And I don't know that even all of us here at the Dais share the same definition of patriotism. So if it, if we're trying to make a quick decision on this, um, I don't know that I would want to do that. I think I'd want to have us be really clear on what our definition of patriotism is and potentially look at bringing that back if we want to have a good discussion. We're looking at putting something into our strategic plan that we're going to plan from. First, um, and so I don't want to do just something quick if we need to have a longer discussion.
So I, I can't see all of the boxes, so I'm not sure if anybody's queuing up any comments, but wh- when you get to a place where you uh, can allow me to interject, let me know.
I'll add something then, if I can. Uh, according to Louisville, civic pride is about active engagement in various types of social and civic activities, promoting the development and well-being of a community and its members. Um, with that, I absolutely would be in favor of calling out um patriotism as an individual. Uh, uh, what are we calling it? Um, core value uh in our summary. So that's where I'm at.
Did you just read the definition of civic pride or a patriotism? Okay, but patriotism was what you're wanting to call out, not civic pride?
No, we already have civic pride as one of our, our, uh, our items, or how many we have. I think there's eight or ten, nine of them. Um, uh, all I'm saying is um now that I read the definition of civic pride, it doesn't specifically call out patriotism. And I, I would tend to agree with Councilmember Van Orman. We do a lot of specific events that support that. So it doesn't call it out in a definition. So for me, that's why I would be in favor of adding it to our list.
Separately, right?
Or me?
Separately.
Separately, individually, yep. But I'm only one of seven. Well, six tonight. Anybody else?
Uh, well, I'll, I'll just, I'll just throw out uh, a definition that comes up here uh from Oxford Language is the quality for patriotism, the quality of being patriotic devotion to and vigorous support for one's country. Um, and so I, I'm fine with, you know, delaying the, the vote if we need to. I, I happened to have a conversation with Tom and he was one of the ones that was in support of this. So um, if, if it means that we'll have to wait for one more vote, that's fine, but
any further comments?
Yes, can I ask Mark a quick question? Uh, Mark, when do you need this by?
So there's no deadline on this. I mean, obviously we want to get this wrapped up as quickly as we can. Our plan was to bring the whole plan back before council for adoption uh in November. Um, but that's not required. It's just that uh was our target. And so really what we want to do is make sure that we have the right set of things. And so if council wants to deliberate on this more, I would encourage you to, to do that versus making a quick decision. But there is no you know, deadline that has to be met.
Okay.
Can I make a motion that we bring this back um at our next meeting for discussion?
You can, sure, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. I I I'll just speak against it. I don't see why we need to delay it any longer, um. Based on what I've, based on what I just read, based on what I'm, what I'm hearing as an in. Uh, as some feedback that Mark reached out to the council is whether they'd like to see it based on comment that. Tom Solberg is the one that originally brought it up. He was like, I think I got this sense he was expecting it to be on the some on our list. Uh, I'm in favor, I I'm ready to vote on it now, but if everybody else isn't, then that's fine too. Yes.
I think the reason that I'd like um more time to vote on it, so the Oxford Dictionary. Um, the entry of patriot, the definition. An opponent of presumed intervention by federal government in the affairs of individuals, especially with respect to gun and tax laws, frequently in the names of right-wing libertarian political and militia groups. So as we have other groups around the area that we're all aware of, like the Patriot Front and other groups. I have some hesitation adding the word patriot without us having a common understanding of what patriot is. I would love to have more discussion on it.
Councilmember Cargill.
I I appreciate that, but there's a big difference between the word patriot and patriotism. Um, if I I would, I might feel the same way if someone said we need to be bring back a a resolution that says we're all patriots or. We're um s- something similar to one of those groups, um, but I don't think. At least not to me, I don't think the word patriot and patriotism are the are the same thing. And if that's the case, then you know, perhaps the New England Patriots need to change their name, because. I mean, that would be right there, uh, something that that uh. Uh, that I would assume people would would make a big deal about, but I've I've never heard someone say that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, the motion is to. Please restate it one more time.
To bring it back on our next city council meeting.
To our next scheduled meeting?
Yes.
Okay, that's the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Um. Then I'll make a motion to add patriotism to our core values.
Second.
Discussion.
I think it's always a nice way of honoring our military, which we have done for quite a few years and. In what I read for. The definition, does it mean you have to always agree? If you don't agree, then it doesn't mean that you don't have patriotism with what's happening, so.
Any further discussion? Yes, Councilmember Cargill.
Um. I I I didn't mind the the motion to to bring it back. Um, my concern is that if if we were to bring it back, then it's just gonna turn into this big. Well, my definition is this and your definition's not good enough, and this definition says that, and so for the sake of just. Ending this, um, I'll I'll speak in favor of it so that we can get it in there, move on. And not have a a huge um fight in the next meeting.
Further discussion? Yes, sorry, Councilmember Kurtz.
My intent is not to fight about patriotism. I think that, again, we're putting together a strategic plan for the next twenty years. From which we're going to plan on, and I understand that not all of us were present at the meeting to be a part of that discussion. But again, my comment stands that we have not put in things that the citizens specifically wrote out in the survey. And we are again putting in something that somebody on the council wants to put forward. So is our strategic planning process something we want to just get done? Or do we want to have a well-rounded discussion and have it represent our community? So we'll go to a vote.
Further, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Four to two, thank you. All right, Mark, anything further on your city administrator report?
So unless there are any other questions that the council has for me, that concludes my report, Mayor Proton.
Great. All right, thank you. We'll move right along to our Spokane Valley Valley Fire Department. Mayor Proton, councilmembers, attorneys, citizens. I will be presenting the September uh run numbers for the Spokane Valley Fire Department uh for the department as a whole and for uh Liberty Lake. How's everybody doing?
Good, thank you.
Good, good.
Just wait for the, there we go. All right, so let's get started. For September twenty twenty-three. Uh, this past month, we had nineteen hundred twenty-three calls. Uh, significant here, uh, the thing that's significant here is we kind of thought call volume was slowing down a little bit, um, and then it picked back up. So this is actually the second busiest uh September on record, so um things are not slowing down. And even though we thought they were, uh, overall, uh, year to date, we've had over seventeen thousand calls. Uh, the responses that were required for the nineteen hundred twenty-three calls was twenty-four hundred and seven. And year to date, we're just over twenty-two thousand six hundred responses. Uh, if you look to your right there regarding the uh red bars, those are the responses for the engine companies. Uh, you'll see that we had obviously uh quite a few uh above the two hundred mark. Um, and so again, uh, we're busy all the way through, so um. I wish there was, you know, some general areas that was slowed down a little bit, but uh things aren't really slowing down. Uh, next slide, please. So this is the responses by eight types, so again, um, I know I've talked about auto aid, mutual aid. Uh, so just to refresh your memory, auto aid is automatic, so. Uh, if I happen to be the closest unit, and even though it's somebody else's fire district eight, fire district nine. Then it's the closest appropriate unit goes to the call, so we do respond uh to areas in District Nine, this is just Spokane District Eight. Uh, and they also respond to areas and uh to our area as well, so it's the closest response. Uh. Next slide, please. For our station area incidents, um. You'll notice that the the general areas, again, Station One, um, six, seven, eight. Sometimes two gets in there, sometimes ten gets in there, but generally it's a six, seven, eight and one are extremely busy. So we are um looking at things to combat that, but overall, uh, things are not slowing down there, so. Next slide, please. So these are the call nature calls here uh by call types, uh, just gives you a year to year from twenty twenty-two in red compared to twenty twenty-three in blue. Uh, our numbers are are not that far off from last year's numbers. In fact, we're only. Uh, about a hundred and twenty-eight calls total, less than uh last year for the same time period. Next slide, please. Again, this is just a year-to-year comparison. Um, there is a bar on twenty twenty-three, which is just right out uh to the right of that red bar. It's just a really small, it's right now we're point seven four of a percent uh slower than last year, so again. Uh, quite busy. Next slide, now we'll focus uh just on Liberty Lake. Uh, so for this last September, this past September, we had a hundred and twenty-seven calls. Uh, if you look to the bargain bar below that, you'll see uh seventy-five percent of our calls were for emergency medical services. Of which forty-one percent, so the highest total call volume for of what uh we responded to were advanced life support calls, so that's. Uh, where we need paramedics, uh, directly behind that was uh basic life support calls at thirty-four percent, so. Uh, we did have some building alarm calls, vehicle accidents, uh, vehicle fires, things of that nature. Um. But overall, the bulk of the calls have been for EMS, and if you look at the map of of Liberty Lake, you'll just kind of see the little. Blue circles there kind of indicate the areas where we had most of the calls at. Uh, next slide, please. This is year to date, uh, year to date, we're at nine hundred and seventy-eight calls. Uh. Overall, uh, seven hundred and seventy-eight of those, um, all but two hundred have been for emergency medical services, so that's eighty percent. Of which fifty-one percent of our calls have been for advan- advanced life support, so requiring paramedics, so. And again, we do have an an ALS fire station here, three, and this is one of the reasons why. Um. That is my last slide, and I'm here for any questions. Is there?
Uh, Chief, uh, have you guys used the overpass yet, and if so, how much did it cut your time?
Uh. They they were using it that day, so I I I don't know if you guys were were still out there. We had the the little girl that uh. Well, she took an awful can awful, remember, uh, the the the. Fire, uh, police chief took the the kids up the bridge and then on the way back down the bridge, um. All the kids went racing down. Uh, she didn't make it, so she was she was our first casualty, bless her heart, uh, so we had, we had to call out uh engine three, so that was their their first use of it. Um, but immediately, in fact, that night, I will say that I live awfully close to it, so. Uh, it's funny that my wife mentions it a lot. She's like, hey, I saw the fire truck, but hey, the lights are on. Uh, so we use it all the time. It is very impactful, and it it does cut between five to seven minutes off call, so it it is extremely. Um. It's awesome. I I can't get over how quickly, I I mean, there's, it's like that, so.
Excellent, thanks.
And and it going code is even faster, so that's with lights and sirens. At at that point, we can just, you know, we stop through the lane and then go through a red light. It's even faster. Very impactful.
Any other questions for Chief? Thank you very much, thanks.
All right, yes, have a great evening.
Thank you.
Bills.
Again. All right, uh, Liberty Lake Sewer Water District uh reports. Mr. Bill, thank you.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
We can, thank you.
Okay, I'll make this brief. Cause it hasn't been briefed tonight, so we're still working on the district, uh, oh, welcome, er, thank you for having me this evening. Um, we're still working on our district admin building, the remodeling is coming along. Um, it's a tight space for everybody that's there, but uh we expect to have that up and running probably in. Four or five months, still having problems with supply chain issues on certain um. Equipment that that's coming, we're staying ahead of the the curve, so so far we haven't. We haven't been, we haven't had to not do the service that's required because of the problems. Uh, Liberty Lake Drive, paving job, we put some pipe in Liberty Lake Drive uh around on the west side of the lake. And the paving job didn't turn out very well, and the. The people that did the paving are are not available, so we're going through legal actions to get that taken care of. And we'll see how long that takes. It's the county and the district that that are involved in that job. Watering season is coming to a close, so um people will be turning off their irrigation systems. There'll be. And some additional charges for summer watering. We don't charge it every month. We accumulate it, and uh so the bills are gonna be a little higher in the fall. Um, that's about all I have, other than civic pride. We have the best water. In the entire county, so if you're looking for something to be proud of, that should be one of those things. That's all I have, thank you. Oh, question, sure.
Questions?
Uh, Bill, when does a leaf uh drop off begin? I know uh last year we ran into a situation where we got snow and ice and everybody's leaves kind of fell at the same time in December, I think it was.
Yeah, so normally it's in, it's in November, but we extended it last year through December just because of that problem. So if we, you know, we, if we get into that situation again, we'll probably, you know, extend it a little further. But generally, it's like the first weekend in November is when we work to pick up the leaf or have people bring him to our leaf uh. Disposal area by the treatment plant.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for Bill? Uh, it looks like we're done with you, thank you.
Okay, good.
Okay, move into our workshop discussions. Uh. Proposal from Executec for managed IT services.
All right, thank you, Mayor Proton, council. Uh, so in your packets is a proposal from Executec that myself, um, city administrator Mark McAvoy and the mayor. Uh, collaborated on to bring to you tonight. To solve the city's long-term IT issues, and when I say issues, I think we're all aware that. Our in-house IT took uh employment elsewhere about a month ago, uh, two months ago, and so our um attempts at. Rehiring for that position were not fruitful, and not only that, what staff. And uh the mayor, we're gonna bring back later this month was a proposal to add. Substantial resources to in-house IT in twenty twenty-four and beyond, and so. Uh, understanding the climate and uh the city did go through uh an informal RFP with some other vendors. That led us back to our current managed service provider, and they are in-house. I'll introduce them here in a little bit, um. To bring this proposal to you, and it it accomplishes a couple of things. First. Uh, it's a long-range solution to a very. Quickly changing and and um. Issue that we have kind of in front of us that. We, nobody in-house really knows how to handle. This is an outside professional service that that. It it, it's my recommendation that we. Have professionals handle that, and so they have constant training that they're going through. They have uh a a. Massive staff of professionals that can handle a bunch of different situations. Where us in-house, we'd be constantly having to train and and identify where these um. Where these trainings and and um professional development courses would live, and so. With that, in this agreement, we have a proposal for um. A member of Executec to be onsite for forty hours a week, a CTO for twenty hours a week. As well as the additional services. That Executec already provides, and so with that, they they're gonna be a lot better at explaining this than I am. I I fumble over this every time I get through it, and so. I'm gonna introduce Mark Loy and Bert Baker uh from Executec to give you a little bit more background on the services that they provide. And the services that they intend to provide for a potential long-range solution for the city's IT needs.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Loy, I'm the general manager of Executec.
I'm Bert Baker, I'm the Clancy Sex Success Manager for uh the Spokane Region.
So Liberty Lake has been a long-term partner of ours. Um, we've had some ups and downs in IT and and watched it grow and change and. As the industries, industries change, so has your environments and your needs, um, you know, we've. We've really been excited to kind of get the opportunity to move forward in a capacity of charging ahead with. Being that solid partner for you guys, right? Um, Executec has over three hundred uh tier-three technicians throughout the organization, um. We bring a lot to the table, we have a dedicated. So what I like to explain to most people when they're talking about in-house IT is, is you get what you hired, right? So you hire on someone and they become the staple of of truth for the organization or for the city, right? So there's not, there's not a, but not a lot of growth that happens. You don't know if what they're saying is right. Um, it's kind of just more of a unchecked, unbalanced solution, right? Um, so for us, what we like about what we offer is. We have a a a lot of different teams within our organization. We have a dedicated security team, we have a dedicated cloud team. Um, we have all these different partners that will will be part of Liberty Lake, helping out to maintain the city's infrastructure. Beyond the forty-hour a week employee, beyond our CTO that will offer you guys to really make sure that we're, we're, you know, helping. Beyond the forty hour a week employee, beyond our CTO that will offer you guys to really make sure that we're we're, you know, helping out Bert. He'll explain a little bit more about what he'll do, but he's a resource that we don't charge for. Um so abuse him. He's a great guy. And uh at the end of the day, he offers up a lot for you guys to be able to work with him directly. Um he'll be probably attending a lot of these types of things with you folks um and helping you out. So I'll turn it over to him.
Yeah. So I've been with Executec for ten years. Um I've seen a lot of technology come and go, a lot of standards, a lot of different practices. Um. I have specializations in IT. Uh I like to think of. IT is kind of like building a house. You have your general contractor. That's good at all sorts of stuff, but if you're gonna remodel your house in five years and you want to do your bathroom, your deck, your roof. Your contractor is going to manage all those uh different people to do that, that are going to be specialized in those particular uh departments. So that's kind of like us. Realistically, your IT guy in these days, it's a three-year turnaround. Um it we've seen it at our at our company. But as Mark said, we have three hundred staff, you know, we have people that are going to always be here. Um when onsite guy goes on vacation or he's sick, we have a whole staff that can backfill. We have directors, we have, like I said, a security team, a cloud team. We're looking at different technologies. We're working with uh budgets. Creating long-term solutions for your guys' departments. And we're pretty much always available twenty-four seven. So you can always get ahold of us. Yeah, open to any questions. Try to keep it pretty simple. Uh but yeah, I've been answering them.
Yes.
Thanks very much. First of all, your pants are the most exciting thing that's happened in this room since I got. Thank you. Uh uh the couple of questions for you. One, um and maybe that maybe this is a question for Kyle. Um it says the agreement is for one year and uh automatically renews each year. Do we have the option to get out of it if we decided?
Yeah. So not only that, we have the option to right-size this agreement, maybe even after a couple of months. So we're gonna get a feel for what. That level of service looks like, and then we can come back to the table and and discuss downsizing if we need to or. Redevoting resources elsewhere if we need to.
Okay. And then the second question, again, this is probably more for Kyle is um. I would, I love to see the client discount on page ten, but then I did the math and it was a point zero two percent discount. So I'm trying to figure out what what is that? I mean.
So then, so and yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't waste too much time with that. So. Where we see cost savings is the trade-off between in-house salary and benefits that we're gonna need. That we would need to carry out exactly what they're going to carry out. And what that is, and the the trick question is, we don't know that because our current salary structure wasn't able to support even a kind of a mid-level. Technician to backfill the position that we had had vacated. So where I would say. That position plus another is roughly twenty thousand a month. That could potentially be a discount. And we'd be looking at more like twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollars a month in salaries versus what we're getting. Uh with a professional staff at Executec. So it's just that for me was really the the moment where it's like, we need to take this. To a professional service, to a company that can handle top to bottom what we need. A- and to their point, we're not worrying about backfilling and when people are out. And it's just one less thing that the city needs to worry about in this kind of crazy. Tech-evolving environment that is really hard to wrap our arms around.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Yeah, just to clarify, so the the forty hours a week, you guys are going to actually send a a physical person here. They're going to be forty hours a week. Um, okay. And then from from a comparison standpoint, you said the the individual that's going to be here is is a. A level or two above what what we had previously.
That is correct. And we have the potential to rotate what that forty hours a week looks like. If we need somebody that's specialized, and I'm not even going to get into all the different specializations. But as Bert alluded to, if we need a plumber or we need a different specialty in the IT world, we can rotate and use those forty hours to the maximum benefit of the city.
That's great. And and we don't, we don't pay benefits and things like like we would.
No, this is a flat professional services agreement that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'll call myself then. Uh I want to piggyback on what Jed just asked. Uh so. Uh basically, this contract is for two hundred sixteen thousand a year. Are you telling me that? We couldn't hire this in-house for less than that?
No, not for two. So what we were going to ask for is an IT technician and then an IT manager. That would be a step or two above what we had.
So your reference to twenty-five thousand a month was for two employees, not the one that we previously had.
Correct.
Um, okay. And I guess the the other part of this that got my attention was the overtime. I'm assuming there'll be a little or none. On overtime if.
Yeah, that'll be close advantage. And then we would get an alert from them. If we're approaching our allotted hours and then it would be, okay, we're. We're diverting or we're pushing stuff off into the next billing month, so we're not getting dinged on a bunch of overages.
So why no option on a rollover if we don't use all the hours? Say, for example, uh I I'm really, I'm going to encourage or I hope we're encouraging that we get the same person. Uh week in and week out. Now, things happen in life. They get sick, they go on vacation, whatever have you. So I I just heard you say you'll backfill them during that timeframe. Um. So I'm looking forward to having the same face in that position most of the time. But uh um. Uh what? So then if that's the case, why not give the flexibility to allow some rollover for the benefit of that employee? Cause if they want to take a week off this month, right, we're not going to pay you for the forty hours, but we'll catch it up on the next month.
Yeah, I mean, there's usually nineteen.
Or is some, i- is it possible that something could be so critical that we have to have somebody in this building every day of the week? Cause the way I read this contract, we will have somebody in this building every day of the week.
Yeah.
All year long.
Yeah.
Regardless of the day.
Well, but Christmas.
Holidays. I get it. But you understand what I'm saying.
Sure. Yeah, yeah. Uh you know, it's kind of going back to the house analogy. Is your house always perfectly spotless and clean? You could always go and dust it. There's always mopping to do. Depending if you have floors or not kitchens, you know, just is the same with like I- IT. There's always ongoing maintenance to do. There's always audits. There's always things that we should be doing and could be doing. And we're going to prioritize prioritize our hours accordingly.
So the way I look at this as well, I'm so I live in Liberty Lake, by the way. So I have a bit of a vested interest in the network staying up. So uh for me. Something's going to happen when somebody is not here, and that's just the way that goes, right? It always is the way it goes in in IT. So. Um so yes, I think I think having someone here. On a con- consistent basis that you all can can depend on is very important. Um that's why we were, we were never opposed to to partnering with Todd. And helping him grow and and, you know, do what he was doing because we knew that somebody needed to be in here. Um that's why I never suggested that. We just take care of it and we show up every other week or two days a week. Um because y'all need help when you need help. So.
So uh if I can follow up then, uh I'm hearing you say it's going to be the same person.
It's going to be.
Majority of the time.
So we've, we've picked someone that's agreed to be here every day. Um doesn't matter when you need him. As long as we're not going over on hours, then we're good. Um that doesn't mean that he won't get sick and it doesn't mean he won't take vacations. And when he does, we'll have a backfill. So we'll have someone else that's. Very intimate with your network, probably the CTO that we've assigned. And they'll, they'll be covering.
Understood. So I I I won't have to work with them very much unless my computer. Or something out it shouldn't, but um I'm assuming his department will deal with them a lot. Yep. So yeah. If there's a, let's uh uh what I haven't, I didn't see in here where there's a process if it not a good fit. How would you address that?
So it's 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 in there, but at at the same time.
I must have missed it. Yeah.
Yeah, it's in the fine print.
It's way down in there. Yeah.
Yeah. Um but at the same time, I mean, we've been working with Kyle for years and Kyle knows me well enough to know that whatever he needs is what we're going to do. Um so if we need to switch somebody out because it's not a good fit, that's not a problem. So.
Just looking for some open dialogue.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And if I'll jump in, the city has, and so the city being myself, we have weekly IT meetings with Executec. Where if additional discussions around potential fit or conflict issues can have, we can. Uh we can pivot out from that and and have those discussions and reroute somebody else in that might be a better fit if that's the case.
And and not to question your your motivation here. It's just when I see a fixed contract and it's based on an hourly rate that can get abused easily in some. Businesses. So those are just things that I would be aware of and I would hope that our team would be aware of and you as well, knowing, hey, would this is, this got to work good for everybody.
Absolutely. Yep. And again, Kyle knows knows me well enough to know that we'll we'll work through any bumps that we have or might have. Uh but at the same time, the fixed for us is also protecting us, you know, so that we're not abused. Cause obviously we've seen that in the past before as well, where, you know, uh if you have a fixed contract or when you have a fixed contract, then there is no overages. Then, you know, we could get, we could get hammered with things. So. That's to make sure that we remain profitable as well.
If if I can interject, just just one thing, I I want to make sure that. It it's very important from a a staff perspective. We're we're talking about a piece of critical infrastructure. That's in the same category as a road or a sewer system or or something like that. It. It is critical for these systems to be up and operational so that the city can do its. Business and deliver its its core services. And so it was very important for our staff in this transition to start out with a like-for-like presence in the in the facility. And especially when you're dealing with, say, Lisa's team. Who is uh using and relying on network reliability. All the time. Same with our police department, same with our library, same with our financial services team. And so that was a a critical component. And as Kyle described. This is scalable. And so as we gain some experience and and see what is the best fit, we can scale it. The other thing that I would offer is that in our experience recently, uh our onsite person who was here was committing not only the forty hours a week. But there was plus, right? It was forty plus because things were happening off hours. Uh things were happening that were outside of the norm. And so as we continue to grow and mature and attacks keep getting more sophisticated. We're going to need to be able to have that scalability. And so that was just, that was a critical piece for our team to have a comfort level with this transition that. There was going to be somebody on site for forty hours.
Thank you. That's all my questions. Anybody else? All right, great. Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Sure, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. And so next steps, Council, uh Mayor Protem is, we'll have this as an action item on the October seventeenth meeting.
All right, very good. Uh we'll move along to workshop item number nine B, board and commission meeting transparency. Not sure who's leading this discussion, though.
I brought it up so I can.
Okay, okay.
Well, thanks very much. Um obviously, uh transparency is important to all of us. And this issue came up for a couple of different reasons. One, I was talking with a a citizen. Uh several months ago, who said that he wanted to to be involved uh and participate in not only the city council meetings, but some of the other. Boards and commissions that we have in the city. Uh but he said he didn't really feel like his opinion was was wanted or or needed. Um and I asked him, you know, why do you feel that way? And he said, well, he. He tried to jump online and look at different agendas and meetings and and get a sense of what was going on. And he had no idea what was going on by reading the agendas. And so I was kind of taken aback by that. Um and I said, you know, well, the council packets are. Hundreds of pages long sometimes. And he was talking specifically about some of the boards and commissions as well. Um then we had the issue come up a couple of weeks ago where there was a little bit of confusion in this room about whether. We were or were not required to have the meeting be on Zoom um and have it be recorded and put forward and. When we got hacked in that in that meeting. So um. All of this having been said, um I went and looked at the um. The agendas for almost all of our. Uh commissions and boards and city councils as well. First of all, I was surprised. I knew there was a lot of meetings, but so far this year, there's been eighty-two meetings. By our different commissions and and boards and and the city council as well. But sure enough, uh this person was correct. Um in many of the of of the meetings um. From several of our different boards and and commissions, there are. Discussions and votes on certain things that are happening. But there's no explanation in the packet as to what those items are. So, you know, I just bring up um. A a few things uh from the community engagement commission uh for last month. I printed them all out, by the way. Uh the community engagement commission last month was discussing a framework and process for projects that needed CEC support. Um and um the August meeting, there were twenty twenty-four budget requests that they were going to be voting on. Um and it goes on and on a- all the way back. Um the library board is is similar. They had a um. A couple of computer and internet use policies that were that were put forward, but there was nothing in the packet about what those were. Now, the commissions that are and committees and boards that are doing a great job, the lodging tax. Um advisory committee, I mean, there, they put out everything. I mean, it's pages and pages long about what they're considering, what they're going to be voting on. Also, the um. The uh planning commission always has a very large packet that goes with everything that they're deciding. But then, of course, I came upon the Parks and Arts Commission. And they, in their um meeting just yesterday, actually had two items on their agenda. To vote on a uh inland chess recreation proposal and a proposed recreation program fee schedule. Again, all these things are fine, but the reason why I'm bringing this forward is because I would like us to adopt a more formalized. Transparency policy, but not only obviously commits us to staying on Zoom and broadcasting our meetings. Uh on video uh for for later uh viewing of any citizen who wants to. But also uh requires that we, whether it's this city council or any of the boards or commissions. Put out information that we're going to be considering or voting on and not just listing them on our agenda. It doesn't do citizens any good. We, every committee meeting that we have, we ask for public comments. But how is the public supposed to comment on something they don't know anything about? You know, there's there's no information in there. So I would, you know, I would, I would just say that that's a critically important part of what we do. As a city is providing that um that detail. And I'll just make a final note. I was forwarded actually. Uh something from Civic Plus today. If you check your email, obviously, you we get all sorts of emails from Civic Plus. Where it's a, it's a basically a national organization that does a lot of work with uh city councils and governments across the country. They did a survey of sixteen thousand people across the country. Um in the past year, and eighty-two percent of them said that they wanted local government to be more transparent. And so I just think that this is a a very simple, good government thing we can do to make sure that our local government is as tr- transparent as possible. And putting out the items that we're going to be considering, whether it be obviously this city council or the the commissions, boards. Um and different committees uh of the city as well. So that's why I wanted to bring it forward. Thank you.
Further discussion. I'll jump in. Sure. Uh uh I I appreciate that your comment. So um uh. A little more uh formality to the content is what you're suggesting.
Yeah, or I mean, it doesn't even necessarily have to be formal. I mean, if if uh.
Well, I do, I'm I'm I bring that up because your third bullet point here is uh be made available in written form.
Yeah.
To the public in an agenda.
Exactly.
Similar to how we present our agenda packets for a council meeting.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, so I went back and watched some of these meetings as well that did not have anything associated with the packet. And oftentimes they'll go through it. They'll say, okay, here's our red line version. Here's what we want to change. Here's what we want to vote on. And that's, again, that's great. But that's in front of them. It's not in front of the public. It's, sometimes it's up on a screen, sometimes it's not. And the public doesn't know ahead of time, okay, you know, the the lodging tax committee or the library board or the. Uh the planning commission, as I said, is is doing a pretty good, a pretty good job. The uh community engagement commission as well. The public doesn't know. What exactly the commissions are voting on. So I would just suggest that we say, okay, we're going to have a blanket policy in the city that says if we're going to be voting on something or considering a policy change or. Or voting on a a proposal in one of our commissions, that we let the public know about it. So that then they can come and give us their opinion. And uh provide citizen comments.
So this would be a new policy for the city.
Well, I think all three of these are um under the same umbrella of transparency. I mean, you could call it the. Liberty Lake Transparency Act, if you want, or something like that, where where it would be, you know, the Zoom requirement. Uh the requirement that we just make sure these agendas are available so people have plenty of notice. And then we make sure that if they're going to be considering a proposal or voting on something that it is put in the. And then we make sure that if they're going to be considering a proposal or voting on something that it is put in the, in the, in the packet.
So would, so would this be the appropriate place to include appointments? Cause we've been talking about our appointment. Process for a while now. It's really, I don't think it's formalized. We've been, we've had, we have an unofficial. Procedure, I guess, but I, I don't know that we really have it in writing anywhere. So I'm asking if this is where that would go.
Like outside the ones that are in the different various for the commissions already, like something in addition to how the appointment process works for those?
I mean, we're talking about a, a, Paul, I'll call it a new policy, but a policy for transparency. Seems to me we're taught, other than this body, all the other. Sixty meetings out of the year are, are, uh, uh, managed and, and the discussions are from those appointments. So, yeah, maybe this is where our appointment policy or procedure, whatever you want to call it, could be included. I'm just throwing it out there for.
I, I feel the, the appointments are actually drawn into the ordinance that construct the individual committees. So to try and supersede that would involve modifying and removing those sections from nearly every ordinance of the city.
That's a good point. Just throwing it out there. Cause when I read this, I, it reminded me of our appointments discussion. So just looking for a way to find a home for that. That's all. But Dan makes a great point. Yes.
Um, so that's exactly what I was thinking is, is both Dan made the comment. Um, my suggestion would be, you know, let me talk with Mark and staff, uh, about what that looks like because. You're talking now about ordinances, you're talking about individual, um. Commissions, um, own either bylaws or rules and things of that nature that, you know, if we're putting something in there that we're going to need to review to figure out exactly what that looks like. And I, I can't answer that tonight. So, um, it, from the standpoint of. I, I understand what, uh, Councilmember Cargill is saying and what the intent is with that in mind, we can go back and look at everything and then kind of, kind of. Come forward with a plan of what that looks like on a big picture, if that works for everybody.
So that's specific to, to these three bullets or the appointment as well?
We could do both. Um, that, I'm just saying from the standpoint of where you are, what you're talking about, and, and Phil's talking about something else, and we can look at what that process is. But certainly from the standpoint of all the commissions are established by an ordinance. And so to the extent that you're going to make a change, you're going to have to address that within an ordinance.
Yeah. So maybe it's not a separate policy. It's just addressed the verbiage in the ordinance.
Potentially. Right. And that's my point. I don't know the answer to that right this minute.
Yeah. I mean, I would, I would assume that under, uh. Under the Open Public Meetings Act and some of the requirements in there that. Those would be, th- th- those requirements would be part of those ordinances.
Certainly all commissions are subject to the Open Public Meetings Act. Yes, absolutely. Um, so it's just to the extent, I, I, I don't know the extent of, you know, what you went through, what that looks like. Um, we'd have to examine that further to make specific recommendations, you know, what, for a path forward.
Okay.
I, I just have one follow-up comment if I can. And I don't know who, uh, would volunteer this, but, um. Wh- when we, I, I feel like if we're going to tackle something like this, we need to have a, um. A staff representative to assist with this process. Is that going to be you? Or, or do you want a little time to talk?
Yeah, let me, I, I need to figure that out.
Talk to, talk to Mark, maybe Mark can answer, but I, I just, uh, I s- I sometimes feel like if we don't have some. Uh, um, some staff driving the conversation or even just documenting what has been discussed. We get off the rails maybe a little.
Sure.
So that's all.
So Mayor, Mayor Potem, if I can interject, what I'll say is I'll be that staff representative and like Sean mentioned. Uh, he and I and the other team members will get together and kind of put a, a proposal together and bring it back. For, for council to review and modify as, as it wishes to do.
I assume that, Mark, I just didn't want to volunteer you right out of the gate. All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? Nope. All right. Great. We'll move right along. Thank you. Uh, okay. So I'll make a motion. Uh, to approve general business consent agenda items ten A, B, and D.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Move on to general business eleven. A, but it's actually from general business ten C regarding the approved joint transportation planning interlocal agreement with Spokane Valley. Who's, um. Sorry, I just need to get somewhere here.
Mark, did you want to comment on the agreement or? Sure. Um, so Mayor Potem, this is. An agreement that we've been working on with, uh, the city of Spokane Valley for a while. Um, and this is a conversation. That has existed prior to, uh, the most recent example of, of, uh, just some inability for us to be able to have a formal. Mechanism in place to do certain things. And, and Lee, I see Lisa's on the line and she can help provide some context. Um, and if you all remember the neighborly development, we had this issue where. Uh, there was a mitigation in place, but because we did not have a mechanism. Uh, to collect fees for, for the valley, it put us in this limbo and it put the developer in limbo for quite a long time. And so this, uh, agreement is designed to not affect. The city of Spokane Valley's development, uh, codes and regulations, nor will it affect. The city of Liberty Lakes development codes and regulations specifically, but what it does is it gives us an agreement. Where we have a mechanism, uh, to, to make that, uh, more streamlined when, uh, mitigation. Uh, measures need to occur. And so Lisa, if you want to maybe give a little bit more, uh, down, uh. A level in detail to provide some more context, that would be great.
A- absolutely. And so, um, uh, council members, um. This is an agreement that it doesn't presume that we're going to agree with the mitigation measures. But it provides a, a, a process for us to move forward. When we reach consensus, we know that there's impacts and we agree upon the methodology. Uh, and the developer agrees with the methodology. Um, it enables us to then, um. Uh, enter into a mitigation agreement that does not, um. Unduly burden the developer upfront. And I'll give you a great example. So for the bu- binding site plan for neighborly ventures, they had to pay all their mitigation fees upfront, despite the fact that it's a phased development. When we have mitigation fees, mitigation fees are charged at the time of building permit issuance. This would, this provides a mechanism for that to happen. We are right now in the midst of, uh, a, a, a very large. Final binding site plan with centennial properties. It's a hundred acre development that's probably. Going to take five to 10 years to build out without this kind of an agreement in place. Um, they would need to speculatively pay the mitigation agreement upfront in order to be allowed to, to, um. Record their agreements. This provides a mechanism whereby we can follow our process and our code. And, um, assuming all the parties, which in the case of Centennial is exactly the case, the city. The developer and the city of Spokane Valley are all in agreement as to the terms of the mitigation agreement. This enables them to, um, move forward with their development and pay mitigation fees as development actually occurs. So, um, I, I think that this is very beneficial. Again. N- nothing, there's nothing in this agreement that requires us to, um. Require a mitigation that we don't feel is, um, proportionate. Or that we don't feel is, um, that we don't agree with the methodology on. But again, um, it, it gives us a mechanism for doing it and. It hopefully will diminish the likelihood. That we'll be going down the very time-consuming and costly pathway of. Having hearings before the hearing examiner to result, to resolve these disagreements. It gives us a, basically a footing to. To work together collaboratively to come to a, uh, uh, um, a mutually agreed upon solution.
Say again?
Can I say when he's, she's been, she's, she's finished? I got something to say.
Go ahead.
That last point, um, that Lisa just made is the point that I was going to make, which is. It helps alleviate those potential legal issues and legal disputes that we've had that, and I won't digress that the council is all familiar with. For various de- developers over the last couple of years. Um, doesn't mean that there won't be some. You know, hiccups along the way that, you know, there's some difference of opinion because as Lisa said, it's not a mandatory, but the idea is there's a collaboration now. There's a working agreement between the jurisdictions to avoid those situations and have an understanding. To trying to find the mitigation together as opposed to having to go before the hearing examiner or even, you know, subsequently to a, the superior court if there, that it can, uh, would arise. So the intent behind this agreement was to, um. Have that situation avoided if, um, under the terms of the agreement as opposed to going before the hearing examiner every time. Um, and in fact, before the meeting started tonight, because the agreement was before the Spokane Valley City Council tonight as well. And the attorney emailed me and said they passed it, their meeting tonight, just so everybody knows.
Which member done?
Uh, yeah, I, I'm very grateful. Actually, I appreciate this as a signal of cooperation between the two jurisdictions. I think it's been some time that we've struggled with a lot of different issues related to development. And to have a formal agreement that allows us to work together, I think is an important step. Uh, Lisa, you said the important words to me, which isn't, doesn't create significant burden to you or the staff to go about doing what you do. Uh, that you've been a part of how this agreement was formed since, you know, it got together, uh, was all that I was really looking for. Thanks.
You.
Good. Councilmember Spencer?
Uh, yeah, I was just curious whether, um, Spokane Valley has entered into a similar agreement with any of the other jurisdictions on, on the other sides of them? And, and if so, uh, was that limit from the, the boundaries similar to that one point five miles?
So my understanding is that they, um. Have had conversations with the county. Um, they don't have an agreement necessarily, but the county will. Automatically impose the mitigations that, uh, the valley, uh, charges. Again, the valley has done. Similar traffic impact analyses for different segments of their city. And so they have a basis for, for what they're, what they're. They have a basis for what they are proposing to charge for mitigation. Um, we've had some disputes in the past. Related to methodology and have worked together to try and, um. To, um. Basically, um. Make certain that what's being proposed is equitable to all parties. So I can't speak to the process that they went through with the county. Um, I believe that they've done some negotiations with, uh. The city of Spokane. I know that the city of Spokane and the county have those joint planning agreements also. So it's not uncommon. And in fact, it's a- actually encouraged through the Growth Management Act. To do some of that joint planning and we do have. This additional requirement related to con- concurrency for infrastructure. That transcends, um, municipal boundaries. So it's, it's, um, pretty. It's pretty important that we have a framework and a mechanism to do those kinds of collaborations.
Any other questions? Well, I have a boatload, so I apologize to the council. Sorry, Annie. Sorry. Uh. So I, I guess my first question is, um, who was all involved in the creation of this document? I mean, was it our attorney, their attorney? Was it? Was it?
So it was multiple people, um, myself, Mark, Lisa, um, the city of, uh. Well, a couple of attorneys for the valley, Kelly Concreit and Tony Beatty. Um, Eric Lamb was involved, um, as well as, um, John, um. Lisa, what's the engineer's name? I forget.
Uh, Jeremy Clark and John Holman were both, uh, were both also involved in it. They're, they're from the technical side of the equation.
Great.
And we did, we, I will say this, that we did push back. We did make certain that what was. Being proposed was reasonably consistent with what our standards are because the valley. The valley is, uh, their standards are, that are mu- much higher. They wanted to. At fifty trips require fifty, uh, trips required that, uh, the, um. That, um, a T I A be required and that's not consistent with our, so, so we did definitely negotiate to make certain that, that. Um, we were not asking anything more of our developers than is already committed in city, in city of Liberty Lake policies.
There were multiple iterations that went back and forth. Um, and I, I, I will say, one of the key things for me was making sure that Lisa and her staff. Um, were not burdened more so, uh, under the terms of the agreement. Um, I wanted to make sure that it was. Practical for them on a day-to-day basis and ensuring that, um, it wasn't going to create that extra burden because at the end of the day, the agreement. Um, practicality is going to be bestowed upon her and her staff. And so she was comfortable with it as, as far as what the language and, and what we negotiated and, and saying it was acceptable to her relative to her and her staff.
Fair enough. Thank you. Uh, so just a couple of observations. As, as I look, follow up on, on Jed's comment on the one and a half miles. Um, that's basically our, uh, city boundary west, all the way to Harvard, all the way, uh. North to south. Uh, so. And when I look the other way, that takes us to Flora. And when I look at the un, uh, undeveloped available lands in those areas. Uh, our, our chunk of undeveloped, undeveloped land is substantially larger than what they have available. In the one and a half mile distance. So. That was a little concerning that we're going to. Uh, we're going to have this discussion, uh, on any improvements to those lands. From our border west, all the way to Harvard, which is. Mostly all of the centennial property. I mean, I, I'm sure, uh, stuff on, on the north side, uh, um. Uh, the river district is already probably not part of this, but if you look at those lands that are, that are in that one and a half mile rig, uh, distance. Uh, it's not just, uh, residential and, and, and such, mixed use. It's the core of our. Some of our businesses coming through the pipe, whether it's next year or it's 10 years from now. So. Um, this agreement is going to be long lasting for us. I don't see it's. That big of a deal for them, given the lands they have available. That's just one observation. I don't know if. Anybody wants to speak to that, but.
I, I can say initially, and Lisa can speak, uh, specifically, um, it was bigger initially. Um, the one and a half was, was, was agreed upon, but I think Lisa, you were comfortable with the one and a half. Relative to the projects and, and what that entails that, um, made it acceptable relative to the, um. Area because your points well taken is from the standpoint of that discussion and that was had. Relative to what that looked like for both the jurisdictions, but I think Lisa was comfortable given the circumstances of, of one and a half. Lisa, you can add further.
Yeah, if, if, if I may, so, um, Centennial Properties, we were already in conversations. We were jointly, uh, planning. Uh, with the developer, with Spokane Valley, et cetera, to identify what mitigations were necessary for the, uh, centennial country vista binding site plan. To the south, which basically creates entitlement for the remaining properties, um, west of Harvard Road. Um, with the exception of one parcel, um, that's still part of the, um. The, the, uh, Liberty Corporate Park. But, um, basically that takes care of the entitlement for the entire south side of I ninety. Um, the other piece though, in our conversations. Um, is that Centennial was also looking at, um, a binding site plan to basically establish entitlement for all the property on the north side of. Of, uh, um. Uh, of the freeway. And again, um, because they know where they're going with that and they know the challenges. We have to look at transportation concurrency regardless. It is a requirement. We have to go through this as part of the. It is a requirement. We have to go through this as part of the secret requirements. And so, and we're aware of what the um capacity constraints may be. So so Centennial has been discussing it, we've been discussing a path forward. That is going to, for the most part, address um that those two major projects are going to cause almost all of the properties both north and south of the freeway to be basically entitled. So this is, this is as much a process and a path forward for these projects that are already in the pipeline to have a mechanism to move forward. If that makes sense, Phil.
Assuming, I'm I'm hoping there was substantial input from the landowners, the vacant landowners.
Yes, uh and 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 may I say, it's the vacant land owner singular. Yes, they they were at the table, they were actually asking for this.
Okay, and then my, to follow up on that one and a half mile, uh if there is, what's it, is there a is there a uh uh does this document expire at a certain date, or is it perpetual? And the reason I'm asking the question is if we ever, if the day ever comes and we can expand the boundaries of the city, then this document still applies?
So I believe that we, I believe that we gave ourselves uh um a hundred and eighty days on notice to the other party to uh terminate, is that correct, Sean?
Yeah, there's a notice provision in the agreement that the agreement can be terminated.
Okay. Uh all right, I'll skip that question.
And and the duration is because you may have ongoing things, it's not a situation where you can get ten days notice and you're done. There could be ongoing projects relative to what it looks like, which is why that was a longer duration relative to a notice provision.
Um but it's uh ten year terms.
Yeah, I believe that.
In your terms, okay, good. Uh so I guess as I'm reading through the, if there's uh if if the landowner is just going to pay money uh to the other jurisdiction. Uh I I was looking for something in here that specifically said that those monies would have to be used for mitigation of whatever the issue was related to the project.
So the so.
My point being is they can't just take the funds and put it into their general fund and use it on however they want. They have to use it for whatever the mitigation issue is. Is that, did I miss that?
That is, that is, that is absolutely correct. And that is, so it has to be, it has to be um a mitigation for an impact that is being caused by the development, and it's gotta be directly proportional to that. And the what the what the RCW say about that is that it has to be spent within a five-year period. Because these are impact, these are mitigation fees. And so, so that's all already baked into this. This is just the process by which, and and again, it ties it back into SEPA and it ties it back into uh the threshold determinations, which is, which is where all of those sideboards already rest in the RCWs.
Okay, thank you.
Going back to an earlier sorry, Phil, going back to an earlier point, that this is, this is pure, this agreement is pure mechanism and process. It doesn't change uh our codes or their codes, it doesn't change state law. It doesn't change SEPA, it just gives us the mechanism to make it a more streamlined process when we get into that situation.
Understood. So under the mediation of disputes, uh I didn't see anywhere where it talks about uh the landowner. Talks about us and them, but if there was a dispute with the landowner not per se, not upholding their end of the deal, or uh is there any concern regarding that?
So I'll answer that. Um the mediation provision in the agreement, it's just relative to the two parties. Um the landowner is not a party to the agreement, so it would be an issue about the interpretation of the agreement itself. And the party is disputing over a term or condition within the agreement, so to the extent that that arises, they would have a requirement to mediate initially before taking any further steps. So um I I suppose there could be a situation, you know, involving a landowner, if the parties wanted the landowner to be a participant, they could certainly do that, they wouldn't be mandated, but you can't compel a landowner to participate if they're not a party to the agreement. So this is just in in the intent if the the city and the city of Spokane Valley have a dispute over what what the agreement says or what the interpretation is of the agreement, they would have to mediate that dispute dispute initially.
And the same question, if the landowner defaults at the result of that mediation?
No, this is.
Sense that we're, we're trying to make it, make it a faster process. I understand the last couple have been, have really drug out the process, almost tanked the pro- the project. I I understand the purpose of it, um but it all, everything I'm reading pertains to the valley and ourselves. Um so what part of the end user, meaning the developer, the landowner, they have to I would think they would have to accept the outcome of a decision. And I guess that's my question. What if they choose?
If I may, if I may, Phil, um if they disagree with the threshold determination, they get to appeal it. They can appeal it to the hearing examiner, they can appeal it to Superior Court. That's absolutely always within their rights. As for the enforcement mechanism, so what this agreement basically requires is that is that I have to have a receipt that they have met this before I issue the building permit. We do the same thing with Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District. I can't issue my building permit until they issue their sewer and wa- sewer and water permit. I can't, i- if there is a mitigation um tied to SEPA and the transportation concurrency um that has to be paid to the city of Spokane Valley, I cannot issue the building permit until they provide me with a copy of that receipt. So that's how that's, that that there is an enforcement mechanism that's really baked into the enforcement mechanisms we already have. It's and again, it's important to recognize that all this agreement is doing is providing us with a framework to tie it back into our existing processes.
All right, well, I'm certainly not trying to question all your hard work and efforts, that's for sure, and I appreciate your, appreciate the document, I just didn't wanna go into this with not knowing what I don't know, so.
Uh understood. Uh we we've had, we've been looking at this for a long time. I it it's uh I it it uh str- totally understandable that you'll have lots of questions.
All right, thank you. Sorry for taking so much time for the council, council member.
Sean, in your uh text with the other city attorney, was it unanimous?
Uh he just said it was passed. I I don't know the answer to that. Um I I I knew that the both councils were gonna have the agreement tonight, and he just had sent me one. I didn't know he was gonna send it to me. He just sent me an email just in case I wanted to know that it had passed tonight.
Okay. I know sometimes the valley council can be.
I know, that was my last question. Have they signed off on it yet?
And that's why I brought it up, and so um he said it did.
Okay.
All right, other than Phil, any other questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed?
Did we have a motion?
Was there?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did make a motion. Did I make a motion?
I don't think we.
I did, but maybe not.
Add into it, but maybe we never got a second.
I'll make the motion then. Uh so I'll make a motion to approve the joint transportation planning in our local agreement with Spokane Valley. Yeah, I think you're right. I think I just called it out on the agenda, yeah. All right. All right, so we have a motion.
Second or second?
Perfect. No further discussion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to item thirteen A, public hearing. Also comments.
Number twelve.
Nope, sorry, council comments. Nope. Hearing none, we'll move on. Alrighty, sorry, public hearings and appeals. Uh presentation of sources of revenue for twenty-four annual budget. I'm assuming that's a Kyle.
All right, thanks again, Mayor Protem, counsel. Uh so the information I'm gonna give you tonight isn't earth-shattering news, this is kind of a statutory requirement as we dive into uh the budget process and budget season. As more of a backdrop on the consideration of increase in property taxes, and we'll get into that towards the end of this uh presentation here, but uh what we'd like to do is just give a really high-level overview for council, but more more importantly, the public and whoever else is interested on the array of sources of revenue and uh to what extent each of these major sources of revenue uh funds a major city function. So we'll do next slide, please, Jacob. So I think everybody here knows our biggest single source of revenue is sales and use tax. Uh so in twenty twenty-four, in the budget binders you guys will get in about two weeks, uh we have budgeted five point million, uh five point nine million in revenue, twenty twenty-three, we're projected to uh clear about six point two million, and that is a nine percent increase uh from twenty twenty-two. We have had really strong, steady increases in our biggest source of revenue, so that really puts the city in a strong position as we continue to grow. Demand for services obviously has has increased, it it puts us in a great position to to meet those those um ever-increasing service level needs of the city.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Um so are, is it five point nine because we're just being conservative, or five point nine because you're thinking?
We, so as as a, as a general practice for budgeting revenues and expenditures, the city and its financial policy budgets revenues conservatively and expenditures a little bit more liberally, you will see a deficit when you see the budget document. That ethos is baked into that, and so we can then rely on overperforming potentially revenues to carry these more liberal um uh expenditure line items. A- and the reason we, the reason we do that on the expenditure side is because if we did, let's let's say we did like a zero-based budget model with the activities that the city has now, so I mean, i- if we were a a smaller city, we could, you know, down to maybe the the hundreds define maybe some activities, but as the city grows, we we cannot possibly account for all the possible outcomes and services and events that take place throughout the year. And so we do that on purpose so that we can truly provide day-to-day operations and services uh for the city without coming back with eighteen budget amendments at every council meeting, because this thing arose and we didn't account for this, and so so that's, so you'll see that as we go through the budget process and and um and how that plays out, and so that's why you'll see us maybe take a worst-case scenario approach with revenues, because if that does play out, if we do see a recession that's long been, you know, predicted by any number of economists over the last three years, it's like okay, we're gonna crash and burn, we're gonna crash and burn next month, we're gonna crash and burn next year. At some point, that more than likely will come true, but to what extent? And so I I I would say, you know, the city's not completely insulated in that, but we have positioned ourselves incredibly well with our with our economic uh and business activity to weather some of those storms, and we came out of COVID way better than I think everybody, anybody could have anticipated, and so so you'll see us kinda throttle some of these revenues to an extent that we think is a is a manageable expectation, but not so much so that we're giving you a a incorrect or inaccurate product.
Is that five point nine um with not in including the possibility of the sales tax to replace the utility tax and then the um uh measure one as well?
That is correct. So we have budgeted zero dollars for ballot measure one to date, so we will put ourselves in a position to pivot and account for those revenues when, you know, November eighth hits and we get, you know, halfway through November and those election results are certified. Uh and so on our next slide, we'll account for some of those revenues for the transportation benefit district sales tax as well. Uh so previous slide real quick, uh Jacob, before we move on. Uh so uh sales and use tax funds uh uh maintenance and operations of the city parks, the facilities, our police departments and administrative services, so we have a very broad use uh of these funds for the services performed. And so for permits and planning, uh that is largely a a department that funds itself through the various fees and and building permits and plan reviews that we charge for those services. And so our our single biggest source in that is building permits. We're through the roof in building permits. Anytime you ask Lisa or somebody in the planning department, they, it seems like they're always just drowning in permits and trying to catch up. And that is a good thing. I mean, that's a sign of a successful city, and so trying to make up for that on a on a service-side demand is gonna be a constant struggle because of the rate at which we're growing both commercially and residentially. Uh but we do have uh some potential um increases in fees in place uh for council review uh as we get through the budget document. And so that said, we have accounted for a a decent increase in twenty twenty-four uh to um to plan for all of the pipeline activity that that we see coming in twenty twenty-four and honestly being on, so. Uh next slide, please, Jake. So real estate excise tax is a essentially a capital tax, and so we have two funds dedicated to collection of real estate excise tax. We have one, the under an RCW that states that the first quarter of a percent of the sale of of real property within the city goes into that fund. We plan under the Growth Management Act, so we are allotted a second quarter percent. So we have Real Estate Excise Tax Fund One and Real Estate Excise Tax Fund Two. They collect revenues at the exact same rate. Real Estate Excise Tax Fund Two is a little bit more stringent on allowable uses, but they're essentially for our purposes used almost interchangeably for capital projects, and so uh we had a couple of really sizable um transactions in twenty twenty-two that really um I I I think weren't indicative of what we can plan on going forward. We collected almost a million dollars in each fund in twenty twenty-two. That is a great source for us to hold on to for these long-term capital projects that that you'll see on the capital facilities plan, but uh for for regular annual transactions, we can anticipate about six hundred thousand dollars in each fund, total one point two million towards um these capital projects as a revenue source for for re. Getting down into utility tax. Utility tax, we've budgeted zero dollars, and so there is going to be some transition in and if that bleeds into twenty twenty-four, we'll have to have that discussion, but these will be utility tax, I I think for our discussion will sunset at the exact same time as the transportation benefit district tax will be implemented, and so we just wanna make sure that the collection mechanisms are in place. I think before we zero out the utility tax, we don't see on any unexpected hit to revenues for the streets fund, and so leading into that, this is a purely streets operation fund source uh that the city uses, and that was by ordinance, I believe. Over thirteen years ago, the city dedicated utility tax revenue towards street operations. Getting into golf operations, this is an enterprise fund, this is, we treat this as a business entity. And so a- as we kinda chewed through quite a bit during the discussion of the financing of the Trailhead Building, one of the major um one of the major discussions was surrounding how can we afford this? What is going to be the repayment source of this bond? We identified real estate excise tax as one of them. Obviously being the other one, which was a little bit of a wild card, but we always knew that we could rely on it to some extent based on the activity that we had seen in the last three or four years uh at the golf course is any excess balance at the end of the year is going towards repayment of the bond, and so we have seen revenues consistently outpace really, I I I think um high-level uh anticipated uh budgeted revenues, and so we we did this on a competitive base. I would say this was a lot more aggressive than what we do for a lot of our other revenue sources in trying to anticipate the income of the golf revenue. And so we're hitting all of our marks in twenty twenty-three, it's um it's really great to see that you know, as we are kind of in the shadow and and getting out of COVID, that this wasn't kind of a flash in the pan, we have some really consistent data that we can lean on this source of revenue for repayment of that bond going forward, so. Any questions on golf operations?
Yeah, go for it. What uh you said the one point five million includes the beginning balance, what is the beginning balance?
Beginning balance, we purposely set at a level that we can fund operations until the season gets going again, so you'll see probably a a an ending balance for twenty twenty uh four, and and I'll have to look back. for twenty twenty uh four, and, and I'll have to look back through our, our current budget. But it's, it's sixty or seventy thousand, and that's just to carry us through those winter slower months. And then our revenue is a really uh ramp up uh from that.
So when you say the excess balance is going to repay off the bond, it's basically anything above that seventy-ish?
Exactly. Yes. Yep. And so we'll can, we'll keep that consistent baseline. Here's what we think we need to get to March or April uh till the weather turns. This will cover us until that point. And then as we get into November and December, and we're talking about interfund transfers back into our trailhead repayment fund, you know, we'll see anywhere between two, three, four, five, six hundred thousand dollars depending on the performance of the year and, and maybe if there was some unexpected expenses. We've talked a lot about um the replacement of the cart fleet. That's a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that will repay itself probably six times over. But that's a big one-time upfront cost where, you know, if that doesn't come down until twenty twenty-four, you can see, you know, in the short term that that's potentially, we only have, you know, three or four hundred thousand to give back to the trailhead repayment fund. When in the long term, we're not going to have that expense for another ten years and we'll realize about a hundred and twenty thousand in revenue um from those almost annually, so.
Uh when's the payment due for the?
So trailhead, we have one payment in June and one payment in December. So the June payment is an interest payment, and then we have our principal and then a secondary interest payment each December.
Good. Thank you.
Uh just one question on that. So how has the uh, because I know you guys were trying to play conservative as far as revenues and things. And I know that the simulators were supposed to be coming into play for off-season. So were those conservative estimates figured into that minimum amount, the beginning balance, so to speak?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Yep.
Awesome.
All right. Next slide, please Jacob. So the primary reason we have the public hearing on revenue sources is the eventual consideration and determination of the statutory allowance that city councils have regarding property tax. So the last two years, the city has not taken the statutory one percent property tax increase. Last year's actual levy was two point nine three million. If we decide to elect a one percent increase this year, that would result in roughly thirty thousand dollars in new revenue. Our new construction credit is a function of obviously new construction being added to the tax rolls throughout the course of the previous year. And so that formula, we get uh about this time every year. I got this email last Wednesday, I want to say. And uh so our allocation that is added to this, to our property tax for new construction was one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars for next year. And so going forward, twenty twenty-four Liberty Lake levy rate. So we're anticipating a couple of different scenarios. What I have put here is if the city continues to elect the zero percent property tax increase, the estimated dollar per one thousand of assessed value is eighty-six cents is what we're planning for in twenty twenty-four. We have seen a, a substantial decrease in the levy rate over the last four years. I think it was a, a dollar thirty-five in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. I'll have to look back through, went from a dollar thirty-five to a dollar twenty-six to a dollar oh six. Or no, to dollar twenty-six to ninety-six cents. Now our estimated is eighty-six cents if we continue to not take uh the um uh the one percent increase. And so uh so just to put that in layman's terms, annual property tax that the city would assess at this rate, if your home was valued at five hundred, or if your property was valued at five hundred thousand dollars, would be four hundred and thirty dollars for city services.
Quick, quick question. Um Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong. We banked the previous years, right?
So yes, we do. So we have that option if we, if the city chooses to a lot more than the one percent increase. And we can certainly have that discussion as we roll out um future considerations of, of expenses. We have until November thirtieth to make that determination to uh the county. Next slide, please Jacob. So property tax funds, library services and public safety, library services by ordinance and public safety as the next mechanism that, that we as a city have decided to fund using this source of revenue. And so as we discussed just a little bit ago, uh the ordinance electing the zero or one percent property tax increase will be presented to council in November after further discussion on the twenty twenty-four budget. So last slide we have on here is, and this is really hard to see, so I've included it as a handout for everyone as well, is the city, how the city relates to assessed value and the property tax rate with our neighbors and what the city can control and what is outside of the city's control. And this is just a pure visual. We don't, well, I don't, we don't need to discuss. I can certainly answer any questions if council has on what we see here, but we have a, a preferential comparison when we look at what is inside the city's control versus some of our neighbors. And so uh you could point to a function of our budgetary needs versus sales tax revenue. Um but you can also just, I, I, I think point to, I think that the city and, and council and mayor and staff have, have taken the necessary steps to not have a bloated inflated government. Any questions on this piece? For sure. So I think, so with that, I can certainly stand for any other questions that might come up, but um this is just an, another step in the process to inform council to an extent, but residents and, and citizens of Liberty Lake on the budget process. October seventeenth, we will plan to have the mayor's budget message uh presented, and then shortly thereafter, uh we'll have budget binders for council.
I just have one request. If you could send the uh presentation out to.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. So at this time, do we need to open for public hearing?
Correct.
At, what time is it? Nine?
Nine thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight?
Yep.
So is there any public comment at this time? Anybody on Zoom?
No, he said no.
No. Do I need to wait a full minute?
No, no comment here, so.
Comment?
So you can close it.
So we'll post it at what time?
Nine thirty-nine.
Nine thirty-nine. Thank you. All right. Uh, thank you. Moving on to fourteen A resolutions, like a motion to approve res- man. Kyle's got to read it. Oh, sorry.
Thanks. Okay. Uh resolution one, two dash one, six, four, G. City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington. A resolution of the city council, the city of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington approving certain public improvements and public improvement costs and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Now I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twelve dash one, six, four, G. Uh I'll leave it at that.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Hearing none, all.
And citizen comments.
Oh, citizen comments, sorry. Anybody on Zoom?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Thank you. Resolution passes. Sorry. No ordinances, no emergency ordinances, upcoming agenda items.
So I do not have the list of upcoming agenda, agenda items that Kelsey usually has. I know that we can, as we just spoke to the continuation of the budget process. Um there was one other thing. I think Mark, if you're on, there was potential discussion of legislative agenda pieces. Can you speak to that if you're on?
Sure. So we've got um a, a solid list now from AWC and GSI. And so our intent is to uh kind of synthesize that into some proposals that we link up with our uh strategic plan, even though that's not formally adopted. We have the framework of that. And so we're going to come back on October seventeenth and, and bring a discussion regarding a legislative agenda to the council.
Any, any other comments? Yes.
Uh two, two quick comments. Uh one, uh in terms of the upcoming agenda, I think um I think we have to discuss, Sean, you were gonna go back and look at language for the transparency thing?
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk with Mark when he gets back. Um and we'll go from there.
Okay, we'll add that with a TBD.
Yeah.
My, yeah.
Uh the other question I had is, do we have confirmation yet, Mark, on the um on the uh budget meeting that we were tentatively planning for the fourteenth of November?
So Kyle, if you have the calendar in front of you, you, you're probably better equipped to answer that question.
Um I'm sorry, uh Councilman McCargill, are we referencing the budget calendar?
Yeah, there was, at, at the last meeting, there was a budget calendar and it said um basically a temporary hold on the fourteenth for a meeting. And I know we rescheduled the seventh to, to the eighth because of um election day, but I'm wondering, is the fourteenth ago or are we still waiting to decide on that?
So this will be, I, I think the discussion on this will really be kind of flushed out after we present the mayor's budget message at the next meeting and we'll discuss what the next steps look like in this budget calendar. And I, I apologize. I don't think I've sent this to everybody yet, so I will be sure and do that as well. These were placeholders. And so on, on October twenty-fourth and November fourteenth, there were potential placeholders for special council meetings to get through budget discussions, much like we've done in previous years where we've, we've scheduled off Tuesdays to get through the material on the budget. So I provided for that in this calendar that I'll, I, I will send it to everybody. These are not scheduled. These are um placeholders for discussion when we get to the budget message. And then if we are getting into uh, you know, the first meeting in November and we're four pages deep into a hundred and ninety-page document, then we maybe need to start scheduling some off Tuesdays to discuss. And so I've just left those and, and sorry, it doesn't come across as a placeholder. It looks like a meeting has been scheduled, but that's, that's not the case. It's a placeholder for us to get from October seventeenth to either December fifth or December nineteenth to an adopted budget.
And we'll just give twenty five hour, twenty-four hours notice for those meetings. So special meetings will be fine. That'll be up to you whether you want it or not.
Perfect. Anything else on the uh upcoming agenda items? Hearing none, we'll move along. Any final citizen comments? Chambers, Zoom? Negative. All right. Adjourned?
Adjourned.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.